Welcome to the Bakersfield City Council Meeting. This television broadcast is brought to you by the local cable companies, the County of Kern, and the City of Bakersfield. You can watch the rebroadcast of this meeting Saturday at 7:00 PM, Sunday at 10:00 AM, and the following Wednesday at 7:00 PM. You can download the agenda for this meeting at www.bakersfieldcity.us. Presiding over this evening's meeting, the Honorable Mayor Karen K. Go.
Good evening. Welcome to the City Council Meeting of September 11th, 2019. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Go.
Here.
Vice Mayor Parlier.
Here.
Councilmember Rivera.
Here.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Here.
Councilmember Weir.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
I'm here.
Councilmember Freeman.
Here.
And Councilmember Sullivan.
Here.
Well, what a crowd we have, and it's great to see so many people engaged in the civic process. I know we have some students here from Bakersfield College. Where are you? Okay, Go Renegades, good to have you here. Thank you for being here. We're going to have the privilege now of having Pastor Saul Gonzalez, who is the lead pastor from Lighthouse Church. He'll offer the invocation. He's been instrumental in a lot of community outreach, just helping people in the neighborhoods and hosting actually big gatherings. Just a lot of fun for the family. And after Pastor leads us in the invocation, we're going to have a very special guest lead us in the flag salute. So Rashab Bose, who's a senior at Stockdale High, he is, he's accomplished something I don't think a lot of us can. Perfect ACT score of 36. Perfect, perfect. So, pretty amazing, isn't it? This is how rare it is. Only two tenths of 1% of students who take the exam earn that score. He's Math Honor Society President, National Honor Society Member, varsity boys tennis team, very well-rounded, and wants to be an engineer that combines the principles of medicine, electrical circuits, and computer science to cutting-edge medical technology. I have every confidence you are going to reach that goal. So Pastor, now please come. Would you please stand?
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council Members. Some years ago, God called us to the community of Oildale. That's where we pastor Life House, Casa Vida. And so we're a bilingual church. It is multi-generation, multicultural, multi-site with the church in Delano and Wasco. And for several years when we were there in Oildale on Manor Street, some of you might recall that building there. So I thought we were there in spite of Oildale. Just, Oildale was not what I felt was my primary calling or my last stop. But it ended up that several years back, God spoke to my heart and says, "You're not here in spite of Oildale. You're here because of Oildale." And so of a lot of the societal issues that we're facing today, I believe that God's called the right people. Not in spite of the issues, but because of the issues that we're facing today, that God had in His mind, the wisdom, the challenges, or the experience that He's already given this City Council, and those that are standing here today in their areas of life because not in spite of where they're at, but they are, and we are there because of God's calling in our lives. So let us pray. Father, we pray for Solomonic wisdom, especially with these Gordian knot issues that we are facing today, both as a society. We've created them in one way or another, and all of us can play a role apart in finding solutions. The ask, the seek, and the knock principle of your Scripture, that if we ask for wisdom, if we ask for direction, that you would provide us. If we seek, if we go beyond just the asking, but actually go in pursuit of solutions, that you would give us the wherewithal, the withedness, and the wit to be able to carry it out. And then if we insist, if something is quite a hard issue, that if we insist and we knock, that you would open those doors. So I pray for Solomonic wisdom. I pray for direction. I pray for divinely ageousness for this council. Thank you for what you're doing in the community of Bakersfield. Thank you that this community, I believe you've identified it for enlargement. Thank you for our schools, our civic responsibilities, and our civic leaders, and especially today on 9/11, we remember those that on this day had a tragic end to their lives, but have become the heroes that inspire all of us today, from what happened on that fateful day to the ruins of those Twin Towers, to the first responders that acted with such courage and bravery, that have inspired a nation to go beyond its pale and beyond its, just its manifest destiny, but beyond that to be a divinely used nation across this globe. I pray that we be mindful of this privilege, of living such a great life in such a free country through Christ Jesus, we pray, and we thank you. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. Would you like to introduce your family before you lead us in the pledge?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor and Mr. Vice Mayor and Council Members. Behind me is my mother, P'ali Bose, and my younger brother, Ronic Bose. Salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May be seated. Here are a few guidelines to help our meeting run smoothly. We request that you turn off your phones, and in keeping with council's policy, council members aren't allowed to send or receive electronic communication during the meeting. Please be courteous in the use of videos and your cameras also. Applause is allowed during the presentations portion of the meeting, but isn't allowed at other times. And for safety reasons, no signs are allowed in the council chambers. For safety reasons also, we can't have people other than our police officers standing during this time. So if there are open seats, there are a few open here, please come and fill those. And if we don't have enough of seats, then we'll have to go in the overflow section, and our officers will be happy to direct you to that. But let's go ahead and fill in the seats now so we don't have anybody standing. Madam Clerk, would you please read the first item?
Under Presentations, we have a proclamation to Casey DeBull and Kern County Fair Chief Executive Officer Mike Alcott declaring September 18th through the 29th, 2019, as Kern County Fair Days.
Thanks, Mike. You came, Casey. You were sick last year, I think. I missed you last year. Council members, it's that time of year again. Are you ready for flamin', hot spiral fries, edible cookie dough, bacon-wrapped maple-glazed carrots? Oh, that's a new one, isn't it? And tamale mac and cheese. It's always a joy to have the great Kern County Fair here, and it is my honor now to be able to issue the following proclamation. The Mayor of the City of Bakersfield, California has officially proclaimed September 18th to September 29th, 2019, as Kern County Fair Days in our city in honor of the 94th Annual Great Kern County Fair and in recognition of the thousands of anticipated visitors who will pass through the gates of the fair to celebrate the wonderful bounty of Kern County and enjoy the talents of its residents in this autumn institution, and in recognition of the opportunity the event offers families to spend time together. You're excited about that. And exhibit one of the largest junior livestock displays in the United States and in recognition of the continued support and outstanding efforts of local businesses in our community. The tradition known as the Great Kern County Fair will allow each attendee to enjoy the food, the fun, and the fair. So it's my privilege, Mr. Alcott, to present this to you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
It's got the wrong date. I'll revise it. Please take your hands.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Go, and thank you, City Council Members. As you know, this is a fun time of year for us. We're anticipating over 400,000 people. It's going to be a good fair. We're going to have great weather, I hope, and we have some great food coming. We also have deep-fried chicken skins, which are really good. I've tried them. And we have lobster fries. We have bug exhibits that I'm sure Councilman Rivera is going to eat some bugs for us out there. It's got a lot of great entertainment this year. We have new stages, the Frontier Stage. We have all kinds of fun acts. We have stilt walkers. We have street drummers. We have a lot of local talent. Of course, we have our Bug Pavilion Stage, which Nellie's going to open us up, which will be our biggest night we probably will ever have next to Beach Boys. So it's really going to be a great fair this year, and I hope that all of you will come out and join us, and I thank you. I also want to thank the City of Bakersfield for the grindings that you have provided for our parking lot to help with our dust control, and it has really, really helped. So come see that in P Street. We're waiting for, after the fair, to do Bell Terrace and Union, and then we shouldn't have any dust problems whatsoever. So again, thank you for all your support. Thank you to Public Works and to you, Alan Tandy, for all your support. And thank you, Mayor Go, my classmate from BHS. Thank you for everything that you guys have done for us, and we hope to see you out there. Thank you.
Also under Presentations, a proclamation to Jennifer Henry, Executive Director of Links for Life, declaring Paint the Town Pink Month in Bakersfield during October 2019.
So good to see you, Jennifer. I'll let you introduce our guests when you get up to speak. One in eight women will hear the words, "You have breast cancer," and one in 1,000 men will hear the same. It's so important that we continue to educate our community about getting regular exams. It's so important, the work that you do. Thank you so much. It's always a privilege to be with you, see you out in the community on a regular basis, caring so much about educating others. And so it is my honor to be able to issue this proclamation. The Mayor of the City of Bakersfield, California has officially proclaimed October 2019 as Paint the Town Pink Month in our city in recognition of the over 268,000 women in the United States who will be diagnosed with invasive breast cancer, in recognition of more than 41,000 women that will not survive after diagnosis each year, in recognition of the unwavering support of family and friends offering sanctuary and encouragement to loved ones in the midst of treatment, in recognition of Links for Life and other organizations committed to increasing awareness and finding a cure for breast cancer, and in recognition of the effort to unite our community through awareness and personal experience, not only during the month of October, but throughout the year. It's my honor to be able to present this to Executive Director Jennifer Henry. Thank you so much, and introduce your guests.
Thank you, Mayor Go, and Council Members for having us again this year. We've been here 27 years in Bakersfield. I have Maritza Imenez. She is on the Board of Directors, and Charlotte Brant, who is a breast cancer survivor and our past president. So Links started 27 years ago with 10 passionate women who wanted to give back to this community. Statistically, we will have 400 women diagnosed with breast cancer in Kern County this year, and we'll lose approximately 100 of them to the disease. So the way we need you to support is, there's a little flyer in there, come out and walk it, lacing it up, on October 5th at the Park at River Walk. And then we have other events throughout the month, which are Rosé and Whiskey. I only had one flyer, and I left it for the mayor. She can share. That will be at Imbibe on the 17th of October. So we will also be partnering with the Health Department and Kern Medical in providing screenings at Bessie Owens School, and then also in Oildale the following day, September 28th and 29th, with also screening out Narvin on November 2nd. So these are free to the community. They need to call for an appointment. So we thank you for your support. We've seen you every year since I've been here, 14, and we continue, we greatly appreciate your continued support, so thank you.
Also under Presentations, Item C, Proclamation to Diane P. Martinez and Team Isaac, declaring Childhood Cancer Awareness Month in Bakersfield during September 2019.
Team Isaac, come on up, and Diane, anyone else who is part of this team? Come on up here, my friend. So good to have Isaac here. When Isaac was five, he was diagnosed with brain cancer, and he's created a nonprofit Team Isaac. I see him all over the place, and he's raised over $30,000 and over 1,000 toys that he's given away during Christmas. We're so proud of him. And yeah, give it up for Isaac, and we're going to hear, we're going to hear about our other guests also. Diane's going to share about our other guests. But let me do this proclamation first. The Mayor of the City of Bakersfield, California has officially proclaimed September 19th as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month in our city in recognition of the over 15,000 children under the age of 19 diagnosed with cancer each year, in recognition of the over 1,700 of those diagnosed who will not survive, in recognition of more than 40,000 children who undergo cancer treatment in this country each year, in recognition of the local children currently under treatment for this disease and families that support and encourage them, and in recognition of the need to support local medical centers and clinics so families have the opportunity to receive local treatment for their children. And it's my honor to be able to present this to Diane Martinez and Team Isaac. Diane, I know we always remember somebody very special on this day, and remembering Ben, the Giant Killer. So, thank you very much. Okay, who is going to be speaking? Isaac is going to speak. So, I'm going to give this to you, and then you go first.
Thank you, Mayor Go, and the members of the City Council for your support for childhood cancer. My name is Isaac Pizzano, and I'm a 7th grader at St. France Parish School. I have a brain tumor, but I am a survivor. I was five years old when it happened. People in Bakersfield supported me, and it was great. Please continue to help the children with cancer because it is very hard for them to be sick. Thank you.
Thank you for your proclamation. We certainly appreciate it. And hello, City Council Members. I decided to do things a little different this year, not knowing that it was going to be such a very busy night in the chambers, but I am very thankful for this opportunity because there's a lot of people here that probably never knew that all these families behind me are currently affected by childhood cancer. Some of them are still suffering from the effects of the treatment they received while getting childhood, while fighting childhood cancer. These are the people that you represent. These are the people in your city, in your districts, and these are the people that needed a change yesterday. Not last year, not when Benjamin even passed away in 2016. That would have been wonderful. But we needed a change yesterday so that none of these kids would be standing here today. We're asking for your support in raising awareness into September as it is National Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. Mayor Go already gave some statistics, but 46 families every single day will hear the words, "Your child has cancer," and seven kids every single day will die from childhood cancer. Those are realistic statistics. These are the people that are living those statistics right now, and this is why I decided to change the way that I came to you before you today. We have lived under the saying that actions speak louder than words, so now we're ready to move on from the words and start seeing some action. And it looks like the City of Bakersfield's here for a lot of action in a lot of different ways, but our kids are our future, and they are what matters today. We need your support. Thank you.
Wow, there are a lot of people here. Want to take a giant picture? Why don't we go this way? Go this way, and then why don't you just come back there? All right?
All right. That's okay. We're just going to go there. We're going to follow the people. Get up there with the mayor, man. Just help me. She goes. Yep. Make sure you put your...
Let's all squeeze in. Okay. Thank you all. Thank you very much. Organizing it.
Ma'am, I overcame a real fatal disease as a child, so I'm behind you all the way. Give me a call, and we'll talk more about it.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome. I'm two people of the life of diseases I was born with, and I'm one of the two. So I'm a big supporter on child diseases because I've been there myself. Usually people by age three die dead. I'm one of the people who's died.
All statements are given a three-minute time limit, 15 minutes per topic. If you have written comments that are longer than your statement, please give those to the clerk, and she'll distribute them to the council. Please avoid any behavior that's disruptive, and we are very interested in your comments and your concerns, but due to the Brown Act requirement, council can't take action when an item isn't on the agenda. The council can, however, refer your matter to committee or request that staff contact you. Madam Clerk, how many speakers do we have here tonight?
Madam Mayor, we have 39 speaker cards.
Okay, we have a lot of people who want to speak. If you're here for hearing item 10A, now is not the time to speak. You'll be given an opportunity when that item is called later in the meeting. And I'm also going to move something. We have many of you who are here very interested in the issue of homelessness, and I'm going to move the public speaking portion of that after we hear the workshop comments. I know there are many cards, and we're going to give opportunity to people that, to those people in this stack to speak, but we'll need you to be very concise in your comments. So, Madam Clerk, now would you please call the first public speaker? So, you're clear on that, right? Just go ahead and accept it, Julie. We have a lot of people here interested in many different topics. We just ask you to be very concise when you get up and just avoid repeating the comments of the person before you. Madam Clerk, please call the first public speaker.
Mayor Go, we have five speakers regarding separate subjects, six speakers regarding accessory dwelling units, four speakers regarding item 8E, three speakers regarding the cost of living, and two speakers regarding park naming policies.
I just want to check in with the City Manager on something. Mr. Tandy, on the accessory dwelling units, are you okay with it here, or is there, do you have any preference on that?
Mayor, I would expect that it will be pulled from the consent calendar, and under that assumption, it's probably better to go staff presentation, public comments, unless the sponsors or the committee members that voted on it prefer the alternate.
Okay. Okay. So we'll also have the accessory dwelling units later. Madam Clerk, please call the first public speaker.
Nick Ortiz.
When you come up here, please identify yourself and then move ahead. And, you know, the mic needs to be adjusted for short people like me, so just remember to move it up and down.
I'm relatively short, too. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Members of the City Council, Nick Ortiz, representing the Greater Bakersfield Chamber of Commerce, just here, and I'll be, I'll be very brief on your workshop 6A item, the implementation and the adoption of the new city brand. I wanted to quickly give you some feedback and some history about this process. In 2017, the mayor, the members of the council, Mr. Tandy and his staff, came together with the chamber and a group of private businesses, along with the County of Kern, and I know Mr. Alsop is here as well from the county, and his office did a lot of work on this. So a group of private sector businesses, two trade associations, Kern-EDC and the chamber, two local governments, the City of Bakersfield and the County of Kern, moved together to develop a regional brand that rebranded all of the four entities, plus the City Department of Visit Bakersfield, but in a cohesive way, and in a way that tells a unique, competitive, compelling story about our region. And it's something that needed to be done for a while, and I am extremely proud of the work that we've been able to accomplish together to do it. I know that there has been with any, with any creative item, or any new logo, or any new brand, criticism of, you know, how it looks, and that's to be expected. But what we all need to remain focused on is that this is going to be a great thing, and we are all going to be singing from the same songbook about how our region is better than all sorts of regions across the country. You're going to hear from staff some background on it, and I just want to commend your staff. I want to commend all of you for your leadership and your vision to get this done. I want to thank all of our private sector funders, the 15 companies that went in to fund this, and all of our partners who worked on this. While the brands were designed by a reputable firm, experts in place branding, there were many local companies involved in the implementation of this, many vendors who were involved in developing all of the things that we saw at the brand launch on Monday. So just would like to say thank you and would recommend to you all, and appreciate if you would adopt the brand, as staff is going to ask today. So, thank you.
Thank you very much for your leadership, Mr. Ortiz. Vice Mayor?
Nick? I just want to thank you so much, the chamber, primary stakeholder of the City of Bakersfield, Kern County, and again, thank you so much for partnering with us.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next speaker, please.
Sky Dent.
Please introduce yourself.
Okay, will that timer change? I'm Sky Dent. I'm a former university professor, former Star Trek writer, former Discovery producer. I wanted to thank the City of Bakersfield for coming to my aid in particular, and the aid of the people who live at one, in the 147-unit Country Club Villa apartment complex at 670 Auburn Street. In the last year, the complex has fallen into dangerous disrepair. The fences are falling down, pieces of wood with nails sticking out are endangering the children there. The dumpsters sit overcrowded with everything from bottles and mattresses for days on end. Often, the security gates don't work, and you're not sure at night whether you want to get out and push the button, or whether that will be dangerous. If you complain to the manager, he gives a standard line that the owner, philanthropist Priscilla Hunt, will do nothing. I once complained about a fence, and he told me if I wanted to fix it, I could fix it myself, so I tried, but I'm not really a carpenter. And for the past five months, earlier in the year, they brought in a group of unskilled workers who don't communicate with anyone there, and they don't tell us when they're going to be working on anything, and they live in this, like, secret apartment building there. And the first time you learn anybody's going to be working on your unit is when you walk out your front door, and you may stumble over wooden supplies. And if you complain, Darwin Smock, the manager, threatens to evict you. So he gave me an eviction notice, but, you know, I'm 62. I've been through a lot, so I can deal with it. But the younger people can't, and some of the older people who are immigrants can't either, so they've had to leave. either. So, they've had to leave. So, I didn't even know there was a code enforcement department. I went to your code enforcement department for help. It took a little while to come out because they'd been busy helping with the homeless, but when Derek Clark came out, he quickly found a lot of violations, not to mention the fact that the owners had not gotten a permit for anything in over a decade. I've attached the document here. And so, he's dealing with it and like within a couple of weeks, some things are changing, some things are being fixed. We can't find some of the people the manager has evicted because we didn't know they were going to go so fast. But I know you don't often get a lot of people complimenting things, they just sort of go on, but I thought Derek Clark was very helpful. Everybody in the code enforcement department was helpful. There's a lady there, I don't know her name, but she looks like Susan Sarandon. She's very helpful. And it was very stressful because this is a new city for me. I've only been here three years. I didn't know I would get this sort of support and so I just wanted to once again say thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dent. We appreciate that. Next speaker, please.
Michael Horn.
Thank you. Hello, everybody. My name is Michael Horn. I would like to actually, I'm a business holder here in Bakersfield. My, I'm the CEO and founder and head of the board of the directors for the Gifter Minds Academy of the High Intelligible Mind and Entertainment Thinking Ministries. And what my, what my business is, is actually a school that teaches geniuses like myself to discover our gifts, to teach them to use our gifts to make this world a better place, as well as create inventions that actually prevent and solve the crime problem. And so, I was hoping to partnership with the school, I mean, the city council to not just solve, create inventions that will prevent and solve crime, but also have a council at a park where people could tell their story and perform live at the city park, so we could give hope to the community. Because as a former foster child and someone who's been abused, the risk is so high. Seventy percent of victims of abuse become the abusers. But I took the other route. I took the self-advocacy route and the criminal justice route. That could give the community hope that there is another option to take. And the council at the park is one of the very first steps of giving that hope, the message of hope out into the community. Also, I could prove without least no doubt, smoking at bus stop, transit center, or next to somebody else is violation of California State Penal Code 273A, child endangerment, which states if you allow or permit a child be placed in a dangerous situation, you could get six months in county jail or you're in state and federal prison, death of court. And secondhand smoke causes sudden death and death as well as other childhood diseases and adult diseases. So, it actually violates the California law by smoking next to someone else, which means at bus stop and transit center or in line or anywhere in the home, as well as violation of religion. The right to religion says, because in the Christian religion, you can't, one should not kill. Secondhand smoke been proven to kill other people. So, it actually violates my religion, as well as you don't know who's a genius who's not. And which means you might be killing a genius not even knowing it or killing not a genius not even knowing it. So, it's premeditated motive because you didn't choose to walk away from the bus stop in the transit center or next to someone else who does not smoke. I choose not to smoke. But when you smoke next to me or someone else who don't smoke, you're taking that choice away from them, which is violation of the 14th Amendment, which says no state should infringe or enforce the law that takes away your life's limited prosperity. But yet, by smoking, you're actually enforcing, you're actually infringing on my right, my right to breathe healthy air. Violation of my environment protection act, which says you're polluting my environment when you smoke next to me, which is not just violation of state law, but local law and international law and federal law as well, which, and law said what a person can and cannot do. Likewise, a law puts a telephone or telephone and judges and lawyer what they can and cannot do, what laws they can and cannot make. And the 14th Amendment specifically said no state should infringe or enforce the law on someone else's right.
Thank you, Mr. Horn.
So, you're breaking the law by doing that.
Thank you, Mr. Horn. Next speaker, please.
I was hoping we could meet sometime.
Your time's up.
I'm your council member. Here's my phone number.
Next speaker, please.
Ken Shiloh.
We have a lot of speakers tonight, so just remember, you don't have to use your full three minutes. But we appreciate that you want to come before us and we always welcome your comments. Just, we're asking you to be considerate of the many people that we have here. Welcome, Mr. Shiloh.
Thank you, ma'am. Council members and mayor, Madam Mayor Go, I better get busy with this. Okay, my name is Ken Shiloh. I've been involved in education and teaching for 40-plus years. I've seen the good and the bad. This is a little bit of the bad. I now serve, I'm helping my son who runs GSA Prep School. It's a prep school. They use homeschool curriculum and we also try to help them become better athletes. Right now, we're at Laverne University. They're allowing us to use some of their classrooms and it's adjacent to Riverwalk Park. So, the other day, we were out there and one of the city workers was filming the kids, you know, was being really, really rude and disrespectful. Okay, and if it hadn't been, you know, I wasn't mad or anything, so I met with Ms. Hoover, who's the director of city parks, and Brian, and we talked about it. And, you know, they say they didn't allow groups. So, okay, I get that. I understand that. But we see the same groups doing the same thing that we do in the park. And, you know, I say, well, if they can do it, why can't we do it? I asked about a permit. They said we can't get a permit. Okay, so I guess the only reason I'm here is to see if there's anything you can do to help us with that. Because they said, they seem like that there's nothing that they can do and, you know, the way they harassed us was really, again, I wasn't mad, but it was the kids. It's the way they treated the kids. Okay, these were second and third graders that were out there, some of them. And some of those kids were traumatized by this, this city staff members' behavior. You know, I even tried to talk to the guy, you know, but again, he was rude, very rude and very disrespectful. So, you know, I just, if it hadn't been for the kids, he almost ran over one of the kids with his cart too. I am going to say that. Okay, and I have it on video if you would like to see it, but I don't, I really wouldn't want to get into all that video stuff. So, I say, I still got a minute left. Would there be any way, would there be any way that anybody could help me? We'll, we'll pay for the permit if we have to. But I just don't think it's fair that these other groups come in there doing the same thing that we do every day, you know? I hope you understand what I'm saying. I got 54 minutes left because I have a lot more to say, but I guess I'll leave it there because I know you guys, can anybody give me any kind of, something that I can do?
Thank you, Mr. Shiloh. I believe Councilmember Smith would like to address this.
Thank you, Mayor. I have spoken with Diane Hoover. I received a call from Ms. Waller.
Yes, sir.
And I believe that, you know, we can work out something if she would speak to you again. I appreciate it. I think the idea was, you know, Era Park is right next door and maybe that solution works better for you and it works better for that park.
Sir, thank you so much. It's for the kids, man. I just can't say it enough.
Thank you. Diane, would you connect with him, please? Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
David Abbasi.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council and staff. My name is David Abbasi with the Central Valley Citizens for Responsible Government. I'm here today to talk about corruption and the upcoming election. It has come to our attention that Supervisor Maggard has paid a bribe to the recently disgraced Assistant Chief of Police to go after my Second Amendment rights. This was partially based on information through our sources within the actual Bakersfield Police Department. I see this as political retaliation for my efforts and for my critical and outspoken activism. There were actual gun violence threats made, but BPD hasn't actually taken such extreme measures for them. I made no such threats. In fact, Assistant Chief Dimestahas was recently arrested. He was an actual physical threat. He attempted to beat and, or he beat and attempted to rape his wife in a parking lot outside of a bar recently, according to witnesses, and was arrested last week. Did Sergeant King not see these pre-incident concerning behaviors? He did. He had to keep quiet and do as he was told because it was his boss. This is a common issue that we see in county departments with department heads, which is why we need to end career politicians and replace our department heads. We have a dire need to replace our local officials with decent, ethical people who represent the people's interests and not special interests. Kern County deserves better. Willie Rivera took money from me personally. He also took money from the same cannabis special interest group that gave money to Perez. I think the DA's office needs to investigate that because he also voted yes and was the sole vote to do so after taking cannabis money. Andrea Gonzalez was working with Phil Gonong's group and they were trying to work out something in the beginning of 2018. Behind the scenes, Richard Iger, Assistant Attorney, had asked me to withdraw our ballot measure at the time and work with the council on a more restrictive measure that only allowed a few permits to be issued. I'm sorry, but this is unethical and I'm not going to play along with that. Phil Gonong even has said he has drinks with Ginny, which I believe to be code for influence peddling and backroom deals. So, I am very, very suspicious with good cause. I have done more for this community than most of the current politicians have. I have touched the lives of thousands of people in this community through my work at Green Cross, where I have helped patients with cancer, seizures, and other ailments. So, this community knows I'm not a potential mass murderer, as the city has shamefully said in court. I see the dire need for term limits on the city council as well, so I will be drafting a measure for the city council, term limits for the city council, and I will be running for city council as well.
Mr. Abbasi, your time is up. Thank you. Madam Clerk, next speaker, please.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Madam Mayor, the next four speakers are speaking regarding consent calendar item 8E. The first speaker, Liz Keogh.
Welcome. Please introduce yourself and you did exactly the right thing there with the mic. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Go, Vice Mayor Parlier, council members, Mr. Tandy, Ms. Kitchen, Ms. Gennaro, Chief Martin. And I want to give special thanks to Ms. Drumakis, the city clerk, and her staff. I put in a request for 3,500 records, intakes to the shelter from May 1st. The staff delivered them within the 10 days and they were organized so I could do what I needed to do with them. My name is Liz Keogh, K-E-O-G-H. I have been working as a volunteer with animal control for about six years. On your agenda tonight, you are asked to consider amendment to your code to require that animals brought into the shelter on the second time be spayed or neutered if they aren't already. The memo claims that this will prevent irresponsible pet owners from contributing to the pet overpopulation in your town. I looked at those 3,500 intakes and I want you to know that 3,379 of them were not repeat intakes. They were first-time visitors. That left us with 121. Of those 121 animals, 22 cats, and let me see here, sorry, there were 75 animals who came in already sterilized. That was 62% of the 121 repeat visitors. Forty-six came in needing sterilization. Now, 46 out of 3,500 is 1.3% of that population that I looked at. This ordinance is not going to alter the pet overpopulation in Bakersfield. You're going to have a much better chance if you microchip on first amendment of admission, if you put more money into spay-neuter. I hope, I ask you to take this off consent, send it back to legislation and litigation committee so that we can look at some realistic ordinance, code, municipal code amendments and not something that will affect 1.3% of your animals. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Keogh. And Vice Mayor would like to address this.
Liz? We chatted before the meeting a little bit. When we get to the consent item calendar 6E on this item, I plan on pulling it off and I am going to refer it back to committee. So, the others that plan on speaking on this, maybe they want to reserve their comments until we get to committee and we can chat about it then.
I appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, next speaker, please.
Connor Long.
Next, is Mr. Law here? And if you just heard what our Vice Mayor said, would you like to save your comments for when it goes before committee?
If it's still going to be something that can be discussed tonight, I would like to have a chance to discuss it. Otherwise, I can table it.
Well, sir, what's going to happen? I'm going to pull that item off. I'm just going to refer it back to committee, so there will not be really any discussion here, but committee will give us an opportunity to drill down on the topics.
Okay.
And we can make sure, give your number or name to staff and they'll make sure they reach out to you when that's scheduled.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Sundee Martenu.
Same thing. Thank you.
Yeah, I was just going to say the same thing.
Thank you very much. And next speaker?
Same thing.
Thank you very much and we look forward to hearing your comments at another time. Madam Clerk, next speaker, please.
The following three people are speaking regarding cost of living. The first speaker, David O'Heda.
Welcome, Mr. O'Heda. Would you raise the mic, please?
Good evening, members of the council and Mayor Go. My name is David O'Heda. I'm a wastewater plant mechanic at the city of Bakersfield. I've worked over here 20-plus years proudly. Eight years ago, we were approached and agreed upon ourselves unity that we would postpone our raises in order to help Bakersfield deal with the fiscal crisis. Since then, we have seen zero wage increases. In those eight years going without raises, the city has set workers back approximately 14.73% in wages. But that has not stopped us from delivering the vital services that residents of Bakersfield need daily. Why? Because we are Bakersfield and helping Bakersfield back up is a part of our commitment to the community we are proud to serve. We understand the meaning of hard work, sacrifice, and sticking together through bad times to prevail. That is why we also provided major support in passing measure N, the one cent tax increase that will bring in in excess of $50 million every year. This has helped our city and will better serve our community. The city takes on new assignments and us city workers carry them out. In spite of seeing these projects through to completion, we are not the ones reaping any rewards at all. It is known knowledge that some of upper management positions have received an increase of compensation while rank-and-file employees have to make do with living wage of 10 years ago, in spite of the increase of minimum wage, basic living utilities, and inflation. It is no surprise that Bakersfield is a breeding ground for employees to train, develop, and for them to take off to better-paying cities and counties. So, I ask you, financially, how can the city of Bakersfield continue to allow this to go on? We're training to invest for the others to take the rest, the best. City of Bakersfield can do better for our community and for most valuable assets, its employees, because all of us want the similar things in life, to keep a roof over our heads, to be able to provide food for our families, pay for basic living expenses, childcare, and any other daily living expenses pertaining to each individual circumstances. So, I stand here today and ask you, each one of you, will you help build a better Bakersfield with us city workers, which have done so much and given up even more for our community? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Heda. Next speaker. Just a reminder that applause is not allowed during this portion of the meeting. Thank you, Mr. O'Heda. Next speaker, please.
Gilberto Garcia.
Good evening. Well, he covered a lot of the topics that I was going to cover. We didn't really collaborate before this, so I'll be real quick. In addition to what he's saying, it's really hard to keep good employees around when the private sector is doing so well and paying their people good and we're not getting cost of living raises. It's forcing our guys to look elsewhere, our skilled people, the people that actually are good at these- are good at our trades, you know, can't keep them around because of the inability for us to get the cost-of-living adjustment. So I just would like you guys to please consider something decent for these workers. We want to keep these people. We don't want them leaving, trying to find other jobs elsewhere that can pay them a lot more to do the same thing. Let's keep our skilled craft workers here, and let's take care of them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia. Next speaker, please.
Hi, Mayor Goh.
Welcome. Would you raise the mic, please?
Hi, Mayor Goh and city council. I am an employee for you guys. I've been working for the city for eight years. Within those eight years, we've obviously grown as a city and as well with development, with the city constantly growing. You can see those improvements on 24th Street, you can see those improvements on the 99, you can see the improvements on the West Side Parkway. And as an employee for you guys, we take on these tasks on a day-to-day basis. And although I've had access to the police department, working through Animal Control through my eight years, we are now having to have background checks and live scans to have those committed employees constantly working for you guys. And as minimum wage increases, we're stuck with, you know, pay of 10 years ago. And so all I'm asking for is for you guys to consider this topic that you guys are having discussions with tomorrow. Thanks for everything you guys have done so far.
Thank you. Would you please say your name for the record, Mr. Ariella?
Simon Ariella.
Thank you. Next speaker, please, Madam Clerk.
The following two speakers are speaking regarding park naming policies.
You might want to wait just a minute. Thank you. Welcome. Please introduce yourself.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members. Dave Demahowski with the Home Builders Association of Kern County. We attended a Planning and Development Committee meeting of your city council on August 13th, and there was a number of agenda items, but one of primary interest to us was your policy on park naming. And unfortunately for us, there was a very lengthy discussion of a renaming of an existing park in southwest Bakersfield. We didn't really have much of an opportunity to provide input, but we believe your current policies allow the developer to select the name of the park associated with the adjoining subdivision or master plan development. And we hope the city, when you update your overall park naming policy for both new parks and the renaming of existing parks, that you will consider keeping the developer's option open as far as selecting the name. Very important to the marketing and public messages relating to the development. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor? There's some seats up in the front if you'd like to move on in, and officers, if there's anybody else in the lobby, please invite them.
Uh, Dave? 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 Hello? Look this way, Dave.
Mr. Demah-
Just to let you know that it's not a renaming of a current park that's, I think, going to be coming before the council sometime soon. It is a unique circumstance with a, another park that may or may not have an official name to it at this point, but I do agree with your comments that at some point, planning development needs to look at a policy. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Parlier.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next speaker. We need to make sure that everybody's seated, please. I am sorry, Councilmember Freeman.
Thank you, Mayor Goh. Yeah, at our last Planning and Development Committee, we had, we had expected the agenda item to be neighborhood park naming policies in a presentation from staff on that subject. That had been the direction given to staff quite a while ago, but somehow, I don't know what, where the confusion came, but what we ended up with is a debate on naming a certain park that got very controversial, and we never got to a policy which we desperately need. So I would like to direct staff at our next Planning and Development Committee meeting to present us with a neighborhood park naming policy recommendation, so we can decide on the right criteria before we get into naming parks. And this would consider when builders are contributing to the park or building it for us, and consider all those issues, but neighborhood parks need to be a non-controversial item. I think that's one of the things builders say, you can't sell houses around a controversial park. So the council will need a policy if we're to ever consider actual names in the future. So, Mr. Burns, if you could make sure we have that presentation at our next meeting, I'd really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. And the balance of the speaker cards are related to item 6B. We'll hear those after the public presentation. I don't have any others. Do you have something different, Madam Clerk?
There should be one more final speaker, Scott Thayer, on the same subject.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Welcome, Mr. Thayer.
Scott there, Gascoigne Cook, mayor, members of council. Dave Demahowski already, you know, relayed the concern here, and as long as there's going to be some process that Mr. Burns is going to bring back to the council later and for our review and your review, that'd be great. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Thayer. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Under workshops, we have the Regional Branding Initiative implementation.
Mr. Tandy?
Mayor and city council, I'd just like to thank the staff members who were assigned duty on this kind of regional committee. That includes Assistant City Managers Chris Hewat and Jackie Kitchen, and our Visit Bakersfield manager, David Lyman, and also to Nick Ortiz and the other people we worked with on the committee. It was a very enjoyable experience, and we appreciated being involved.
Mr. Hewat?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and city council members. Chris Hewat with the City Manager's Office. Tonight, I have a very brief presentation for you on the Regional Branding Initiative. This is really our final report and implementation plan. Wanted to talk a little bit about place branding to begin with. It's more than just a logo and a tagline. Branding is really the process that a community or a region, in this case, embarks on to change, refine, improve what really people are saying about a place. It goes beyond, again, that creative side, although that's important, and we'll get to that in just a moment. It's really about the research and understanding where the place sits in the mind of people and where we can make some changes to improve the image. So you're familiar with the seal that's behind you? It's the official seal of the city, the squiggle, we call it the squiggle, in the Vision 2020 efforts, and all those were associated with the city and are associated with the city, but none have been adopted as the formal brand. Of course, the city's the formal seal, but from a branding standpoint, we've not adopted as a body of formal brand, and that's really what we're here to talk about tonight. So a little bit of recent history, in 2016, the city looked into branding. It was really cost-prohibitive at the time without partners. Again, this is more than just a design of a logo. There's a lot of time and effort and research that goes into this type of process. So in 2017, as Mr. Ortiz mentioned earlier, the Chamber of Commerce, 15 or so private-sector businesses, which I'll note in just a moment, along with the county, KEDC, and Visit Bakersfield, got into a room and determined that this regional branding effort was important, given some potential, a lot of potential that the region has to A, brand itself, and B, market itself as a great place to live, work, do business, and visit. Your council approved a contribution and part of the partnership in late 2017, and since then, we've been in various phases: research, refinement, creative development, the unveiling, which happened on Monday, and the implementation phase, which we are now in. So again, this involves several organizations. It's unprecedented that these organizations came together in this way. The city, Visit Bakersfield, the county, Kern EDC, and the greater chamber. But not lost in there were private-sector partners, again, that came through and really started this process, put kind of the, ignited this process. And again, you're going to recognize several of those large businesses, large employers throughout the city and Kern County. They were an equal partner in all this, so this was not the city or the county or any one of those agencies on the left saying, "One of us needs a new logo and we want to just rebrand." It was really a collective effort. We all had a common objective, which is to establish a positive cohesive external brand, family, we'll call it, designed to really focus on economic development, promote talent attraction, and tourism opportunities, both in Bakersfield and across the region. Little bit about the research. Contracted, the chamber did, with North Star Destination Strategies. This is the premier group in the United States that does place branding for cities, communities, states across the country. Nine months of comprehensive research and data collection was done, literature review, I won't name off every step. Many of you were involved in surveys and feedback. And again, the research and the data is much broader and much more detailed than this, and so I don't, I'm showing one slide, but it shouldn't be lost on all of you, that there was a lot behind the data that drove the creative and its driving, what I'll call the brand narrative and brand identity. What we found is pretty, I don't know if it's earth-shattering in the sense, but I think it's very reflective, and the community is a lot harder on itself internally than outsiders. The perception polling shows that outsiders have generally positive view on Bakersfield and Kern County. There's strengths and there's challenges, and there's things that are, were identified that were very critical to a local identity, and I've outlined those here for you. But that was really, a lot of the feedback that we got is, we've got a ton of positives in the community, a lot of great things going on in Bakersfield and Kern County, and sometimes we tend to focus on a lot of the negatives at the expense of the positives, which frankly outweigh the negatives. Wanted to share a quote or a comment that was made. This was from someone who's not, doesn't live in Bakersfield, doesn't live in Kern County. Says, "Bakersfield has so much potential to be different from the rest, cool and raw, just like the Bakersfield sound was different from the Nashville sound." And that's important because the Bakersfield sound is something that's identifiable, something unique to the city, something that no other city has, and that's important as we move through the place branding discussion, because you can own what you have and what's unique to your community, and that was really something from the outside and from doing some of that perception polling, and even internally, that kept rising to the top. And I'll show you in a minute, really, I'm going to go back, not that you haven't already seen some of this, but the brand inspiration. And this was, this is, again, just kind of a brief summary of what inspired the creative, what inspired, you know, through the feedback we received from the polling and from the research. The quintessential Bakersfield soundtrack lyrically really says, "Trying to find something better on the streets of Bakersfield." And through the research, it was clear that Bakersfield is a generous community and provides residents and visitors with something better. And something better is going to mean something different to everyone, and that's what's great about the product that came out of this and what we're going to be able to do with it. So this is the Bakersfield brand statement that accompanies the creative. For those who appreciate the original sound of an authentic welcome, Bakersfield is why Los Angeles becomes the Central Valley, where you find the heart of California's giving ground and where everyone has a chance to find something better. And it was clear, and it's intentional in the brand statement, that you provide geographical reference and that you provide some of those tenants of what the brand means and some of those terms that were persistent throughout the research. So you've seen it tonight, so there's no big unveiling. You saw it Monday, so I don't have a curtain and a surprise for you. This is the logo that was developed, "The Sound of Something Better." It has some elements that you'll recognize, and that's some that can be interpreted as being guitar pick and/or a microphone, guitar strings, has a slight homage to the Bakersfield arch, and of course, it, the tagline is "The Sound of Something Better," which, again, takes root in the Bakersfield sound, but also looks to the future and looks at what we do have in the community, meaning you can find something better here in Bakersfield. So I mentioned that brand family. We didn't do this alone. These are our partners, and you can see, although each entity, the county, the city, EDC, Visit Bakersfield, the chamber, have different elements and different, in some cases, taglines and logos, there are common themes, and that's part of this collaboration that will continue beyond this exercise. This brand family and the thought process and the meat on the bone behind it will really move some of those economic development initiatives, tourism initiatives forward. We've got a lot of exciting things going on in all of those areas. Some are overshadowed and some for many reasons, but we're going to be getting the message out. So let's talk about next steps very briefly. Looking at an implementation time period of about 18 months, more or less, for the city, we've already started. You can see on the right, city's social media platforms and website, and even some vehicles have started to be converted to the new logo. Doesn't replace the official city seal. That's still the official city seal, but it will be activated in those areas of the city's operations, you know, where you would see a brand otherwise. You'll see website, again, social media platforms, printed material changeover over time. And this is really going to provide the foundation for the new Economic Development Division, which is launching due to the Public Safety and Vital Services measure. That division will be made up of a handful of individuals, a team that is going to go out and market the city, and collectively, the groups that have been involved in this effort. It was clear that no one is going to advocate on behalf of the city and on behalf of the county if we're not the ones doing it. And so it was important, as we started the conversation and as we got to the unveiling, to recognize that this is a tool in the toolbox. It's not meant to solve every issue. A logo and a brand is not going to do that, and so we recognize that. But it is an important tool. These issues, the desire to be in the marketplace, to attract the Amazons of the world, to attract other employers, to develop the workforce, to attract the tourism dollar, and our tourism dollars grow every year. We're seeing record-setting tourism numbers every year. That's key in what we do, and that's a benefit to the city overall, and those are not mutually exclusive with some other issues that the council will be discussing tonight and into the future. So I wanted to share a picture in front of a selfie wall here. It's the mayor and our new public information officer, Joe Conroy. Joe is relatively new to the city, about a month in or so, little less. He's going to be helping us spread this message. He's going to be helping out with a lot of other things, hopefully, you know, getting the message out about all the great things the city is doing. I encourage you, if you're in City Hall North, to find your way over in the lobby there to the selfie wall and get a picture in front of it. Finally, I want to thank the city council. I want to thank Nick Ortiz in the chamber, all of our partners throughout that worked on this. I would also, again, like to thank city staff. We've had a pretty positive reaction internally to the new logo. We have a lot of excitement about wanting to roll it out, and so we're happy that that's occurring, and we'll be working towards that over the next 18 months. Specifically, want to thank just a few city staff members, specifically Tom Webster, does a lot of the graphics that you see on these screens, and not in this one in particular, but on social media and the website, and he's been a big help through this process. I also want to thank our risk manager, Gina Covey, for her enthusiastic leadership of our internal committee that is helping implement this. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. We are asking the city council this evening to formally adopt this logo, "The Sound of Something Better," and the associated documents as the official brand, and I, again, look forward to bringing back a presentation in the future to talk about how we're measuring the effectiveness, how we're implementing it as we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hewat. As Mr. Hewat said, this is not just about a pretty logo or colors or a cute tagline. This is really about a new attitude of optimism, knowing that together we can create something better, and that word "together" is so very, very important as we look ahead, and we're excited about the future that we have and the optimistic approach that we're going to take to the complex challenges and the great opportunities in our community. Want to especially thank Tahone Ranch for taking the lead. I spoke about this in my very first State of the City, and shortly thereafter, Mr. Biela contacted me. Private Business had a number of meetings before we ever got involved, and then, thank you, Nick, after, we all came together- you, Nick, after we all came together. Thank you so much, Nick Ortiz, for taking the lead with Joe Renfro from Tahone Ranch on this. There was a lot of behind-the-scenes work as the city and county came together with our other partners. But really, private business, just kudos to you for stepping up, and this is truly a community-wide effort. Thanks very much. Colleagues, is there anybody who wishes to speak? I don't see any names up here.
Well, I'll try.
Vice Mayor.
Chris, I want to thank staff. Alan, everybody who was involved in this project. I know we had, you know, contracted out to do the big stuff, but I, staff really did some heavy lifting on this, too. And I love the synergy with our partners now, moving forward. And with that, I make a motion to adopt.
You have a motion? Please catch your votes.
Motion is unanimously approved.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Update on city efforts to address homelessness.
Mr. Tandy.
Honorable Mayor and member of city council, in a moment, Assistant City Manager Jackie Kitchen is going to give you a presentation in detail on this subject. We do things at separate meetings, we do things sequentially over time. Sometimes the nature of public awareness or media coverage of what we're doing is less than comprehensive. So Jackie's presentation tonight will show a good deal of detail about the past, the near-term future. The issue of homelessness here is one of unprecedented interest and emotion. Been 46 years in this business, I've never seen the equal to this. It is the top priority of the city staff because it is the top priority of the city council. Some strong positives have already been achieved, including strengthening the homeless collaborative and implementing the rapid response teams, both of which Jackie will go into in detail. We know that getting more beds is a major priority. We understand the necessity to act quickly, but the taxpayer money has to be spent on the right alternative, which have the most significant impact on the problems being experienced. Progress is being made on getting the right project and activities in motion. We will be asking for concept of endorsement of some ideas, and will return in the very near future with specific details on a shelter plan. So with that, Jackie Kitchen.
Welcome, Ms. Kitchen.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and honorable council members. As Mr. Tandy said, the topic of homelessness is broad and far-reaching. We all feel it, it's on everyone's minds, and I think that that is evidenced by who's with us here today. We have great attendance at a city council meeting. We have our friends and partners from the mission, from the Bakersfield Homeless Center. I noticed in the audience, we have the county here, CAP-K, the Housing Authority, the DVA, and we also have our local business owners in our downtown area, the people that have invested in our downtown and are helping to see it improve. We are hearing all of those voices as a city and taking them into consideration as we move through and work towards addressing this very complicated issue. We've been talking about homelessness for a while now. My predecessor, assistant, former Assistant City Manager Steve Tagulia had the foresight back in 2017 to organize a workshop before your council. He invited the homeless center, the mission, and FLOOD to come provide a workshop and describe something that was evolving and a coming issue that was before our city. Back in 2017, they discussed that there's an insufficient number of shelter beds that are supportive and preventative services needed additional support, and more. Then in February of 2018, staff came back and provided your council with a workshop on what we've been doing in the past. We talked about the federal CDBG HUD funding and ESG funding that the city has been providing, the three different jobs programs that the city has employed, and different department responses from our police, code enforcement, public works, recreation and parks, water departments, and more. Your council gave clear direction and had the foresight to understand that we needed to begin thinking about new ways to address this issue. In 2018, we got an update from the Kern County Homeless Collaborative. They shared the 2018 count numbers with us, and that there were 885 homeless individuals and 370 unsheltered individuals within the metropolitan area. Those were significant increases. But then January of 2019 occurred, and we did this year's point-in-time count. There'd already been visible changes throughout our community that we have all seen and felt. There were increased calls for service to multiple agencies, including city departments, and it was having an impact on residents and the quality of life, and on the individuals out in the streets. The 2019 point-in-time count verified what we had all been feeling, that in January of 2019, there were 643 unsheltered individuals counted within the metropolitan area, and that represented 108% increase over the prior year. We also noticed a change in the population of people living on the streets. During the point-in-time count, individuals were asked about themselves and why they were there. 51% reported that they had a substance abuse issue, 27% reported serious mental illnesses, 24% a chronic illness, 79% of those individuals had zero income. There was also issues related to housing that we're all aware of. There are many reasons that are contributing to this. While the average Bakersfield rental rate is already below the state and national average, the average for a three-bedroom house is still over $1,000 per year, or per month, which is an increase of 4% over last year and 10% over the year prior to that. Additionally, Bakersfield's multifamily residential vacancy rate fell from 4% to 2% just in the last two years. Further pressure's been placed on our existing service system and our service providers by changes in state law. AB 109 in 2011 included prison realignment and reduced the penalties for certain violations. Proposition 47 in 2014 reduced sentences for drug possession and thefts under $950. Proposition 57 in 2016 mandated early release and redefined nonviolent crimes. All of these things together have resulted in the changes that we see today. When talking with FLOOD Ministries recently, one of our local outreach providers, we asked them if they would chat with the homeless individuals that they encountered each day, and they recently did a survey of 69 individuals and 15 couples, and asked them, "What keeps you from going to a local shelter? Why are you here? Why are you choosing to be on the street?" Six of those people said that the local shelters offered no place for their possessions. 13 cited safety concerns, 12 said they couldn't keep pets, 17 said they didn't want to be separated from their partner. Other issues that they discussed were the location of shelter facilities, staffing issues, services on-site, a number of other things, privacy concerns, et cetera. But 91% of people said that they'd be open to coming to a low-barrier shelter if their concerns were addressed. So as we can see, homelessness in Bakersfield is very complex. There's no simple solution. There is not one decision that will fix this all. So, the city council, with your wisdom, recognized that we needed to do something different and new in addition to what we've been doing in the past. So we looked at a three-pronged approach to addressing this moving forward. First, we knew we had to acknowledge the crisis. Then we knew we had to strengthen our existing service providers, and then implement new funding available through the public services and vital safety measure. So we did the acknowledgement of the crisis by declaring a homeless crisis in Bakersfield in November of 2017, or 2018. On that date, your council passed a resolution declaring the crisis, and that allowed us to access new state funding, which has been passed along to our local service providers. Then to strengthen our existing service providers within our community, the council allocated funds twice in 2018 to the Bakersfield Homeless Center. First, there was $1.1 million in former redevelopment money and CDBG funds set aside to add 40 new beds to that existing facility. And then in December of 2018, another $200,000 was allocated to the continued operation of the homeless center. Your council also allocated funds to the mission at Kern County to add additional 40 beds to that facility as well. $1.1 million in state funding was allocated to that facility, and we're working with the mission now to ensure that that project is implemented and to make sure that it's done in a way that is thoughtful and also considers the surrounding community in that area. Then, in the spring of this year, we went through our annual budget process. We did presentations and just had discussions with the Public Service Vital Safety Measure Oversight Committee and with your council, and funds were programmed and adopted in June in the budget to specifically address homelessness in a variety of ways. And that included the creation of rapid response teams, specific allocations for a new emergency shelter project within the city of Bakersfield, funding for permanent and transitional housing, and then other homeless service provider contracts to support these new construction projects. So I'll go into those in a little bit of detail now and tell you how we're actually implementing those things. Staff has been hard at work. We've been working together with our local partners. The parks, or the Recreation and Parks Director is here with me today, our interim development services director, our public works director, the water director. Every department within the city is working hard on this. So we'll go through a few of those things now. The first thing that we've implemented is that we're looking at strengthening the existing downtown clean teams. In the past, the city's provided support to this volunteer-based effort that meets downtown quite regularly, seems to be more regularly lately, and that's a volunteer-based cleanup crew. And city staff from the public works department, solid waste division, provides and coordinates extra trash pickup services to support those efforts. We're also looking at bringing forward additional cleaning services to the downtown area with a specific focus related to issues and complaints related to a prevalence of human feces within our downtown. It's affecting our businesses, it's affecting our residents. We hear it, and we're trying to work towards methods to address it. There is a specific action item that we are recommending tonight, and we're asking that you give staff direction to return to council with a contract for downtown cleaning services. The next item is increased policing and security. There has been an uptick in property crimes and related issues in the recent months. And in response to that, the Bakersfield Police Department launched a problem-oriented policing patrol approximately 30 days ago. This is a specialized impact team that focuses on areas of the city that are most impacted by recent increases in crime. Their focus is to have proactive policing that reduce crimes of opportunity. In addition to that, the city council has asked us to look into providing private security services for areas of the city that are also most impacted by crimes. The focus of that private security force would be to focus on the prevention of property crimes, including burglary, theft, vandalism, auto theft, and more. The action that we're asking for tonight is that you direct staff to return to council with a contract for private security services. The next item is the city has provided support for the existing Kern County Homeless Collaborative. This collaborative has been in place for a number of years, and it has 30 members that consist of local service providers, nonprofits, public agencies, and more. Their mission is to get homeless off the street, connect them with resources, and transition them into permanent housing. The collaborative is funded by a federal grant that's used predominantly to provide housing vouchers, services, and case management. There is a small administrative portion of that grant that's set aside for staffing and allows for the United Way to provide oversight of the collaborative. However, a predominant amount of the administration of the collaborative is done by the volunteer efforts of the members. All of those members have full-time jobs. But we know that homeless issues are more complex, and that past small amount of funding for administration has become insufficient. So the city and the county came together and collaborated on an idea and recognized the need for additional funding, and each pledged $155,000 to find several full-time staff and create a new nonprofit. This action was approved by the existing 16-member governing board in July of this year. And the action that we're asking for tonight is that you direct staff to return to council with a budget appropriation of $155,000 to support the new staff for the collaborative. The next exciting thing that I'm close to, due to my prior role in development services, is the launch of our rapid response teams. The Recreation and Parks Department launched their team in August, and Development Services' Code Enforcement Division launched their team just this last month. These teams are specialized dedicated staff that are fully dedicated to responding to calls from our constituents. They're dispatched through the city's mobile app, which allows residents to quickly and easily report encampment and litter issues from their own mobile phone or a computer. It's a very easy app, very simple, but very effective. You can download it to your phone. You simply select service requests, you select the report type, and now new types have been added to the app related to encampments. It's pretty simple. If you don't have it downloaded on your phone, I recommend you try it. There's been some great media coverage about the app over the last few days, and I think we've gotten 180 or so calls. So, the rapid response teams are fast at work. Recreation and Parks has responded to encampment cleanups in city parks and on the city's streetscapes and our medians and in our landscape areas. Since August 30th, they've completed over 14 major assignments, and I'll show you a few pictures of those in a moment. The code enforcement teams respond to reports of illegal encampments and trash throughout the city, and they work with our business owners to mitigate the effects of homelessness. Since August 12th, code enforcement has responded to over 123 complaints. A little before and after here, on South H and White Lane, there was an encampment. Recreation and Parks staff, I believe, on this one responded, and you can see the difference. Here's an example of an encampment cleanup in MLK Park. A response to vandalism that occurred in Central Park. It appears there was a fire. The teams descended on the site and immediately repainted and cleaned and fixed the building so that it could be usable again. They've also done maintenance of facilities throughout the city that are in disrepair, that have had some deferred maintenance over time. You can see the impacts already showing here. This is a code enforcement response to a wayside park encampment. As you can see, once the encampment issues are cleared, it provides the opportunity for other maintenance staff to come in and provide maintenance services to the park facility. Another example of an encampment at a restroom, a public restroom, in Lowell Park. This is a code enforcement response to a property, a private property on Q Street that had been occupied illegally, significant difference over time. So code enforcement and Recreation and Parks rapid response teams have been very effective, and they'll continue to grow over time as we continue to bring in new staff. The next thing that we have been working on is a concept that's developed by the Kern County District Attorney's Office to develop a community prosecution program. This program would reserve 100 county jail cells for individuals who commit crimes and are sentenced up to 90 days. During this term, the individuals would receive medical, mental health, and detoxification services, and the city has already agreed to allocate up to $300,000 to fund two prosecuting deputies within the DA's office to work together on this program. Again, another example of collaboration with our local agencies, in this case, the county. On the agenda tonight, on the consent agenda, there's an item that was placed by the city attorney's office at the request of Councilmember Gonzalez. This is an update on the clarification of use of city facilities. There's a section in our code that was updated to clarify that any city employee shall have the authority to expel an individual or group from any and all city amenities, equipment or facilities, if that individual or group is not using the city amenity or facility in accordance with its design or its intended use as determined reasonable at the time. So the action that we're asking for tonight is that your council move forward to approve this request on the consent agenda. The last thing, the most complex of all of the issues and all of the prongs, is the addition of emergency shelter beds to our community. So when the residents of the city of Bakersfield voted to approve the Public Services, or Public Safety and Vital Services Measure, Measure-In, last year, they did so with an expectation that a portion of that funding would be used to address homelessness. Then your city council adopted a budget in June that allocated funds specifically for an emergency shelter facility in Bakersfield. Expedited, fast implementation of- Expedited, fast implementation of this project is underway. We know we need it now, maybe yesterday. But we also know that 150 beds isn't enough. The point-in-time count data shows that. Talking with our service providers show that. We need to think a little more globally, and that is what we are trying to do. We also know that the addition of an emergency shelter bed is more than just a bed at night. The purpose of this shelter is to encourage the local homeless population to come to a new facility. And in order to do that, the facility must provide an opportunity for those people to live with dignity. The purpose of the shelter is to quickly remove homeless individuals from the streets and immediately offer them programming and services that will help them move on out of this facility and onto the next step into permanent supportive housing. So in the past, the city has provided funding to help construct the existing homeless center, and we provide annual funds to help other operators. But no local agency in Bakersfield or Kern County has operated an emergency shelter before. This is a new thing for us, and we want to make sure that we do it right. So with that in mind, the city engaged in a comprehensive research effort to quickly identify best practices and truly understand the operational needs of an emergency shelter. The goal that we had in mind in embarking on this process was to identify necessary facility components that ensure that the facility is safe, that it's clean, and that it's successful in encouraging homeless individuals to come to the site, receive services, and then move into permanent housing options. So in order to evaluate this, we launched a multi-part analysis, which I'll go over briefly now. There are eight components of it. It's highlighted in the attachment that was provided to you this evening with your administrative report. But the first step was to do service provider outreach. We really wanted to understand what wraparound services means. We wanted to understand what kind of services needed to be at the site. So we've met and talked with the Bakersfield Homeless Center, the Mission at Kern County, the Kern County Housing Authority, FLOOD, the Kern County Homeless Collaborative, Behavioral Health, the Office of Veterans Affairs, United Way. We've also talked to others outside of our local jurisdiction, including shelter operators in Fresno and the city of San Diego, San Luis Obispo, and more. We didn't want to just talk to them, we wanted to learn from them. So we started attending different meetings of organizations that we didn't really know much about prior to Measure In. We went to a landlord summit, we started becoming active with the homeless collaborative, we've been involved with state calls to talk about new funding opportunities to address the issue. We've learned about the process, and we've also gone and seen the sites for ourselves. If any of you haven't been to a shelter, I encourage you to go to one. It was a mystery to me until I embarked on this process with my colleagues. But there are a lot of specific things that happen within a shelter that you really get a true understanding of when you visit. Not only did we visit the shelters here in town, but we went to Fresno. We visited the rescue mission there, and they use some recently constructed sprung tent structures. They have onsite classrooms, they have a full kitchen, they don't allow pets, but they do have an 18-month program. And their costs for construction were around $8.2 million. We then visited the Alpha Project in San Diego. We went, we walked through that facility. We met with the mayor, we met with the operators. We saw something that was run well. There were 325 beds in that facility, but it was almost as quiet as this room is now. The reason that it was operated so well is they have 70 staff, an operating budget of $5.2 million a year. Those 70 staff are there 24 hours a day on three shifts. We've learned a lot from them, we talk with them, we continue to have discussions with their staff, what's working, what hasn't, what lessons have you learned? We're trying to do what you're doing. We also visited a storage facility in San Diego. I have to admit, when I first found out about this facility, I wasn't sure what its purpose was. But when I went there and saw different homeless individuals go in, check in their tote, they were able to drop off their things, I saw how it did empower them to then go on and do other productive things during the day, to go to job programming, look at different resources, go to medical appointments. So it's a concept that we should include in an emergency shelter facility in Bakersfield. We also went to what I would call the premier version of an emergency shelter facility in San Luis Obispo. The recently opened 4D Prado Services Center has 100 beds, a day center and services. Their operating costs are around $1.3 million a year, and that's run by the Community Action Partnership of San Luis Obispo. As you can see, they have a variety of components there. They have dormitories for men and women, and then they have specific rooms for families. So they provide services to many different groups. We're also considering taking visits to Los Angeles facilities. There are several there that are in progress. We've also looked into the tent facility that Modesto recently brought online. I would stress that this is a temporary solution. Modesto put up 300 tents on a lot that is under a bridge, and they placed woodchips on the ground. And that was meant to be a quick emergency interim solution while they provide, while they complete construction of two other facilities. The Modesto tent facility is expected to be complete and offline by December of this year, when the other two shelters open. So what did all this research show us? Well, it showed us that in order to encourage homeless individuals to come to a new shelter facility, it must be safe, it must be clean, it must be dignified, and it must offer specific amenities and services that are not otherwise available on the street. The facility must also be located in an area that will minimize and mitigate the impacts to surrounding community and businesses. The facility must be professionally operated to ensure the safety and success of clients, and it must create a suitable work environment for the employees who are there and the service providers and case managers that interact with people every day. We've learned that addressing homelessness is a multi-part, long-term commitment, and it must be done right. Again, the findings of the research are provided in your packet this evening. One of the main things I just wanted to point out from that document is there is a table there that lists all of the components that we think are needed for a Bakersfield facility. There's basic things like the need for office space for service providers, sleeping quarters, restrooms, laundry services, dining. Then there's low-barrier components. Low-barrier is a term that I think is relatively mysterious still to a lot of people. It can mean a lot of things, and it means something different in every community that we've researched or visited for Bakersfield. What we think low-barrier means is a place that provides an opportunity for pets, an opportunity for partners, and an opportunity for possessions. In talking with FLOOD, in talking with other service providers, those seem to be the three things that the local community is looking for. We also know that the facility needs to include very specific safety features, full fencing and lighting, well-planned entry. We need to consider a referral-only model so that we minimize impacts to surrounding neighborhoods and businesses. We need to make sure we have adequate staff training, onsite private security, and potentially offsite private security in the surrounding area. In San Diego, they cover a 10-block radius around their facility to ensure that there are no negative impacts to that community. We also know that we need to have onsite services. What wraparound would mean for us is that we have a professionally-run facility with a professional operator. We have outreach services through FLOOD. We have transportation services potentially through a partnership with the homeless center. We have a coordinated entry program like the one run by CAP-KA and the county. We have physical and mental health services onsite through a partnership with Kern County. We have food services, employment, job training, case management, housing navigation through the Housing Authority, and more. So we had all this information, and six months ago, we thought we had identified the right site. We found Will Park or Wild Park. It's a city-owned property. We felt that it was reasonably buffered from the surrounding area by Golden State and a railroad. And we started moving forward and executing a plan to prepare that site. At that time, the county also reached out to us to share potential co-use of their facility. This is the facility that they took action on yesterday. There are several warehouse buildings on the site, and we had preliminary discussions about potentially using both sites together. And we began planning an initial concept. We thought there might be an opportunity to place a tent for the dorm area, to bring office trailers online for service providers, portable restrooms, have space dedicated within the park area for individuals to have meals and hang out during the day. We would fence the facility. And as we were moving through that process, we began to hear from the surrounding community. We heard concerns from the business owners, many of whom are here tonight. Local people who have invested their money in our city, local people who have been here. They had significant concerns about impacts to their business. What would it do to the neighborhood? What would it do to downtown? We also heard concerns about the proximity to Golden State. Was it creating an unsafe situation for pedestrians? So we didn't know the answers to all of those questions, but we heard those questions. So we decided to pause on Wild Park and go back to the drawing board and launch a more comprehensive search. We decided we couldn't just pick one site and go forward. We had to really make sure we understood our need and what was available here. So we launched a three-faceted search for a location. We enlisted a commercial realtor to search for listed properties. We reached out to local stakeholders in our community and asked them for their suggestions on properties. And we also reviewed every single M2-zoned parcel within the city. That's over 650 parcels. Why M2? M2 is the medium industrial zone where these types of facilities are allowed by right. It's important to keep that in mind because at some point in time, city council in our community decided there is a place for these kinds of facilities, and it's in an M2 zone. So though there's been other legislation that's been passed in Sacramento that says zoning may not apply in certain situations, we made the conscious decision to adhere to our own code and to listen to what our direction has been in the past and to prioritize looking for an M2 site. So through this search process, we're still getting calls every day of people offering property or wanting us to come and visit. We're reviewing those. We've been able to cull down the list to a short few. And we're moving through the final stages of reviewing those properties, including discussions with those owners who don't wish to be public yet at this time. But we do expect that we will be ready to bring a purchase agreement or a lease contract before your council within the next 30 days, and we are asking you to direct us to do exactly that. So kind of to summarize everything, I know this was a lot. Thank you for your indulgence, but a lot's been going on. There's a lot of questions, and we wanted to provide the community and your council with an opportunity to know more about what the city's been working on. So just to recap, we're asking for a specific direction on four items related to the downtown cleaning contract, the private security contract, the allocation of funds for the homeless collaborative, and finally, to take action on selecting a site for the emergency shelter. With that, I'm here for any questions, as is Mr. Tandy and the department heads, and thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Ms. Kitchen. I know that the information that you presented to us is a result of a lot of work. I see late nights and weekends and you working together with many people in our community. So thank you very much for that. This is how we're going to move ahead. We'll take a 10-minute break now, then we'll come back and receive public comment. Typically, we allow 15 minutes total on each subject. I'm going to extend it tonight, but I need your cooperation because we have a lot of people who want to speak. So two minutes each for speakers. You don't need to use your two minutes. If you've already heard the city address this, please don't repeat it. We'll take this break, we'll come back, public comments, then we'll open it up to council for comment and action. We'll see you back in 10 minutes. So just a reminder, thank you for your interest. A reminder that we're going to go two minutes for each person, and you don't have to use your full two minutes up. So please be succinct and avoid repeating what the prior speaker has said in any length. So Madam Clerk, would you please call the first public speaker?
Patrice Gemas and Carlos Rosinos.
Doesn't look like they're here. Do you want to call their names again, just in case?
Patrice Gemas and Carlos Rosinos.
Okay, I don't see them. Next speaker, please.
Melanie Farmer.
Thank you. Just a reminder, when you come up, make sure that the mic is at the right level and introduce yourselves, your name, and welcome.
Hi, welcome. Good evening, Mayor and City Council and City Department. I'm Melanie Farmer. I'm the president and CEO of the Downtown Business Association. I'm also the president of Downtown Bakersfield Development Corporation. I am here on behalf of the Block-to-Block Program that we started this year. We have implemented so far 65 block captains representing over 500 businesses. We sent out a questionnaire to all of our businesses, and the first thing, obviously, that came back was security. And so with that, I'm very pleased. I think a lot of people are very pleased to see I've met with Andre, our councilman for our ward, as well as the mayor, about getting private security for our downtown businesses. They are getting hit really hard. So I'm very pleased to see that it was addressed this evening, and I will wait and hold my comments until I learn more about what's going to come down the line with the presentation and the city. But I do have several block captains here tonight that are going to speak, so I will let them open the floor to them. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Farmer. Madam Clerk, next speaker, please.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor. And Gary Hall is my name, sorry. Councilmembers and city staff, thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak on this subject. I want to speak an experience. The definition of homeless seems to be changing. I belong to a small church in Oiledale, and five or six years ago, we started feeding what we thought were homeless people and trying to help them. And then my interpretation of what a homeless person was, was somebody without a home that wanted a home and was seeking a home. What we have found in the past five years is that most of the people we encounter do not want a home. When we offer them an opportunity for a home, they refuse it. When we offer them opportunities to take them to the facilities that already exist for them, they refuse it for a lot of the reasons that you're already aware of. They may not be able to take their dog, their stuff, which usually consists of two or three grocery carts full of garbage, which they call their belongings, and I do sympathize with them. But what I'm seeing as homeless people nowadays are simply, and I hate to say it, but criminals, many of them. Also, many of them pitifully are mentally ill or abusing drugs. A true homeless person, I've lived in a city in this area all of my life, and I've never seen anybody that needed a home that there wasn't one available for them somehow, some way. I sense...
Just a reminder, there's no applause during this portion of the meeting. Thank you.
I appreciate the efforts of the city and the county. And excuse me, I'm over my time, but let's focus on the true reality that most of these people are not really homeless.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. Next speaker, please. Just a reminder, please.
Kurt Wingate.
I know you're very passionate about this subject, but just for the order, just no applause during this time. Mr. Wingate, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Crowe and city council members. I am Kurt Wingate, born and raised in Bakersfield, California. Been a downtown business owner for the last 22 years at the corner of 23rd and M Street. And we have a criminal problem. Second, what he says, these people are not homeless. They're walking around with stolen merchandise called shopping carts. They have bolt cutters in their backpack that if you lock up your stuff or you lock up your company vehicle, they'll cut the chain. If you make the chain bigger, they'll cut the fence. You replace the fence, they come back, they cut the fence. These are criminals, and they need to be dealt with as criminals. Louis Gill, thank you for your services with our homeless. It's a shame that homelessness has morphed to include all these criminals. Our business on 23rd and M Street, that is a thoroughfare of these criminals making their way up to the recycling center. They're coming out of the ages treatment center. These people are whacked out of their mind on drugs. They come into our waiting room, they take our sign-in sheets and tear them up. We can't get them out of the waiting room, we can't get them off of our front step. The police are overwhelmed, they can't get there. It is a war down... there. It is, it is a war downtown. And I just ask, please, let's, if downtown is going to be the lifeblood of Bakersfield, let's treat it as such. Let's not put drug treatment centers. Let's not put low-barrier tent cities in there. All you're going to get is more of what we're getting right now, and it's a huge, huge problem. 22 years, and I've never seen it like this downtown. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Wingate. Next speaker, please.
Mirko, thank you. Mirko, City Council. I'm not going to repeat what everybody said. We all know that. But I am too, on ground zero. And I was going to speak about private security. We have, as a collaborative group, met about private security. I personally amount $20,000. New fences, new everything, cameras. I did choose to get proactive. I do have extra lighting. I do have extra cameras. I do have razor wire. I don't feel like we should do that. I've been downtown 20 years as well. Thank you so much. Thank you for actually considering private security. We are going, we were going to try to pay for it ourselves. We can't afford it. We can't afford the vandalism. We can't afford it. And we are really appreciative of you considering it. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Brewer. Next speaker, please.
Mary Helen Barrow.
Welcome.
Thank you very much, Mayor Go and council members and staff. A lot of what was in your report really made me feel good, but there's a lot that needs to be added. One of the things I think that we need to focus on is the alleyways. A lot of these junkies, and that's, I'm sorry to call them that. You know, it pains me. I used to have so much compassion, but as I've told Andre, I'm losing it. And it hurts me to say that I'm losing it. But, you know, when, in our stretch, I'm one of the block captains in Block-to-Block. That's a great DBA we've got. And I'm proud to be part of their mission. But so many of our businesses are really threatened. We've had two or three move out of our little niche. I'm on 17th Street between D and F, and there's a lot of medical offices there. And I have an insurance business. But, you know, we need extra parking time there for our clients. But the problem is that also the homeless people, they know that people park there for a long time, so they kind of hit the cars. So we need more lighting in all the streets. We need more patrols. I like your patrols. We need strong security. And I really, I also didn't hear one thing mentioned, and that's about the limited English speaking. I don't know what the demographics are regarding the homeless and the drug addicts, but as a Latina and a former broadcaster who worked closely with the limited English speaking, I'm also a bilingual educator, and I work with, you know...
Ms. Brewer, your time is up.
Oh, sorry.
Thank you for speaking. And for the record, would you please say your name?
Oh, I'm sorry. Mary Helen Barrow.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Madam Clerk, next speaker, please. Welcome. Please introduce yourself.
Yes, Shawna Hadad Byers. Thank you so much for allowing us to have this forum. I think it's wonderful. I have owned and operated businesses downtown for 19 years. I started at the Padre when nobody wanted to go in there. The first thing I asked my father was if it were clean, if it were nice, would you come in? Absolutely. I've always dug downtown. The wonderful energy, the excitement, and now you have all these great restaurants and shops. Sadly, it's increased with the crime and the drug addicts. I applaud everything everybody has said tonight. Go for it. The only disheartening thing is when Ms. Kitchen said, "Well, we had a shelter and we got it all figured out, but somebody didn't like it, so we're going to stop." We might need to slow down and reconsider a little bit, but we can't stop. We're already years behind this problem. Years behind this problem. We can't save San Francisco. We can't save LA. We have to put the mask on ourselves. We have to take care of ourselves. We have a plague of drug addicts. We have people that can't function. We have people that will probably, and I'm sorry, I'm going to kill everybody's joy. We have people that will most likely die on the streets for weather conditions. They're too cold. A heat stroke. They're drug addicts. These people, not all of them, but a lot of these people are not going to be helped with a bed. They need mental attention. They need physical attention. We need to separate the people, which Louis Gill has done, Zane Smith at the Boys and Girls Club has done. These people, we understand, they've had hard times. They've had to go to a better situation. We're all here for that. You just heard Dixie say she has to put razor wire around her boutique in downtown Bakersfield. We have a beautiful new logo. So let's wrap our arms around our beautiful community and take care of each other, and let's really look at the problem instead of having more discussions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Byers. Next speaker, please. Welcome, Mr. Wheeler.
Good evening, Mayor Go and honorable council members and staff. Jim Wheeler, Flood Bakersfield Ministries. I want to just get off, start off by saying I acknowledge the frustration that people are experiencing in our community. I'm a part of the DBA. We participate. I've been over to Dixie's place and comforted her when, you know, a smash-and-grab has happened, or they've had issues with getting somebody out of their store. I've been to the Blue Oak Cafe when somebody's broken their window. But I promise you, we cannot solve this problem by criminalizing every single person that's on the street. There are people that come to my office every single day who have issues and who want to get off the street. And we're doing the best that we can, but we do not have a place for them to go. So I'm encouraging you all to move forward with the creation of the shelter, to continue to partner with the county and collaborate. I thank you for the efforts of the city staff to create, help be a part of this new nonprofit. But we need places to go. Flood is out on the front lines. We're out every single day talking to people and engaging them and working with them. We have a contract with Kern County Behavioral Health, and we can help people to get into those services, but we need a place for them to go. And they are people. They are human beings. Yes, some of them do bad things, and they should be dealt with. We should incentivize people to do what's right, but we can't incentivize them unless we have a place for them to go. So I, again, I just want to encourage the council to move forward with the creation of the shelter as soon as possible. And again, thank you for your staff. Thank you to Mayor Go and Andre. I know that you guys get a lot of guff from the media, and I know that you do a lot of stuff behind the scenes that people don't know, and I applaud you for your efforts as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Wheeler. Next speaker, please. Welcome.
Louis Gill. I think I want to start with saying, folks are angry. I've never been able to get mad at something enough so that it changed in a positive way. There's somebody that I really respect that says, "You know what? You are so much more than the worst thing you've ever done." I understand frustration. I understand being done with your compassion because you just want things to change. And then, if we want people to go somewhere, there has to be somewhere to go. I applaud the city's efforts. Your investigation, your learning, your serious intent to understand what it takes to help people so that they can successfully transition from a life that's not working to a permanent home. That is not a small thing, and it takes time. It takes intent, and it takes dedication. Anger doesn't work. We know we need more beds. We know they have to be safe. They have to be sanitary, and it has to be compassionate. That's how you build a relationship. That's how a life changes. I don't know anybody in the service provider community that wants people out on the street that are breaking the law. Nobody wants to deal with that. If you break the law, there are consequences that you should have to deal with. And then, they won't be locked up forever. They'll be back to us, and we must, and we will, be prepared to receive them so that we can move them home and so that they don't cycle back to the streets. So thank you very much for your very intentional work from the city manager's office.
Thank you, Mr. Gill. Next speaker, please. Well, you're coming up, Cassie. Thank you for your faithfulness and coming out on Saturdays and cleaning with us. We really appreciate that.
First off, I want to thank all of you, our government officials, police department, and our city council for working with us for trying to find a solution for our epidemic. I hear a lot of great solutions tonight coming from our city, but what I'm not hearing is a way to help protect us. There are two epidemics going on right now in our county, there, our city. There is a homeless epidemic, and there's also a vagrant. These people that are on the streets causing these issues on a nightly basis on my street and surrounding streets are not these wonderful people that I actually come in contact with on a daily basis. Karen, Mary, Ty, these people I've seen for the last eight years, not necessarily taking the services but living on the streets, are not the ones doing these detrimental things to our businesses. These are drug addicts, and we need to address that situation, that we are allowing these people to stay on our streets and cause these damages to local businesses. Luigi's has been here for over 125 years. My family's restaurant's been here for 80 years. We're not going anywhere. We're here to stand beside you and try to find a solution to this. So you don't have an angry mob behind you, but you do have frustrated people that are looking for solutions in the same way you are. Try to work on both sides, and I applaud you for efforts that I couldn't do. It's above my pay grade. So I do appreciate everything everybody's doing. And Andre, this is not on your shoulders. I appreciate everything that you've been doing for us. Ward 2 is a scary place right now. It really is. And I am scared for my employees and the people around us. But we are stronger than them. Sorry, we're a red-blooded county, and we are going to do what we can. So thank you for your time, and hopefully we can get through this.
Thank you, Ms. Biddle. Next speaker, please.
Mayor, city council, and city staff, I appreciate the opportunity. I come forth as an individual from the community who supports our business sector. I've eaten at many of the restaurants of the people that have spoken here. But I also understand that even though there might be some criminal elements on the homeless population, there's a lot of people that need assistance and help. And I want to say that I appreciate what I heard from the city today in regards to what they're, what you're trying to do. And I encourage that you continue to do so because there are homeless people out there. There are people that need the assistance. And I do that, I tell you this, because I used to be a parole agent supervisor in Kern County. I'm retired now. But I'm familiar with the homelessness. In fact, that division has handled many of the people with mental problems, with homelessness. But there are some good people that need the assistance that City Councilman Gonzalez is doing and other folks within the city. So I support the business community in terms of their concerns and their real and important concerns. But the homeless people also need the assistance from the city, and I want to support that by a polar approach to dealing with our homeless issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Would you state your name for the record, please?
Rosario F. Santillan.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Welcome, Mr. Carter.
My name is Kyle Carter. Y'all, y'all know who I am and what I do. My wife and I have been battling this, this problem for about a decade now. And I met with Andre a few months ago, I don't know, six, eight months ago. And I said, "We need an all-out concentrated effort on doing this." And you guys delivered. I'm so proud of you, and I'm proud of what you guys are planning on rolling out, and I support it 100%. But you're a little bit short-sighted. There's one thing I'd like to add, and that would be trying to repeal what is it, Prop 47? Prop 57? I think that we need to add that to it. As a city, we need to go at that thing, and we need to see if we can get it repealed. I would throw in, I would financially help, and I'd put my time behind it. There are people who need to be in prison. There are people that, that are on drugs and then have problems. And by putting them in prison, it's not a bad thing. It's a good thing because it allows them to dry out. It allows them to, to have a time where they can clear up their minds and make, make conscious, good decisions and get going back on the right road with, with health care and, and mental care and these kinds of things. So we've got 600, I think we actually have 800, but, you know, 600 empty beds up at our Lerdo Prison right now. So all we've done is we've emptied out, because of 47 and 57, we've emptied out the prisons and dumped them out on our roads. So me, as a taxpayer, I feel like, I've already paid for those prisons. Now you're asking me to pay for these low-barrier things. So I'm against that. And I'm also really worried about where you're going to put this thing at, the low-barrier deal. And we're out of time, but we need to really seriously look at that. And I would like to have some buy-in on that before we start putting it somewhere. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carter.
Very much.
The issue that you addressed in terms of the repeal of Prop 47, there now is an initiative that is qualified for the ballot. It's called the 2020 Reducing Crime and Keeping California Safe Initiative. District Attorney Zimmer and I came out with a statement last Friday in regards to that, and I was planning to refer it. I know earlier, our vice mayor actually, the first time around when this initiative was brought out, brought that to the attention, and our council actually endorsed it during that time. It didn't qualify for the ballot. There's a new opportunity now. And so you'll be hearing more about that. Madam Clerk, next speaker, please.
Good evening.
Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Mark Valprado, longtime resident of Kern County and a property owner in the Westchester area. Again, this is not just a city of Bakersfield issue. This is a greater Bakersfield issue. Years ago, there was, I believe, loosely used the term a halfway house that was put up at the end of F Street in Rancho Bakersfield. It's now tore down now. That created a huge problem for homeowners and residents, and not only the downtown business area as far as vagrants and transients that were allowed to stay there and move through the properties, you know, within the greater metro area. I appreciate the efforts and the, and the things that you're looking at, Ms. Kitchen, you know, your, your report that you did, and the efforts that you're going to other areas to take a look at these kinds of things. I appreciate the comments from, from the business owners downtown and, and those that are in the service providing areas. But I just think collectively, you really need to take a solid look at where you're placing these. I know it's, it's, it's time is of the essence for everybody, but, you know, collectively with the county and the city, to find someplace within either the county, city, and/or adjacent properties or boundaries, i.e. Calcott. I don't know if anybody's reached out to them as far as their, their warehousing facility, but with construction efforts from the local community and, and, you know, consolidation to be able to push forward on getting this community help and this community problem situated and handled, the efforts could be put into there to reach out to them. And I have a question. You'd mentioned that there is a potential piece of property that you're looking at, or you're at liberty to discuss or say to the community where that is that you're moving forward with for the council?
Ms. Kitchen, would you like to respond to that?
Yeah, as I mentioned in the presentation, there are a...
Yeah, as I mentioned in the presentation, there are a small handful of properties that we're talking with, property owners about. As we've always said throughout this process, transparency is important to the city. We obviously want to have community buy-in, part of the reason that we paused on Wild Park. The property owners have asked to remain anonymous at this point because it is a real estate transaction.
Appreciate that.
Obviously, we're going through a potential real estate negotiation, but once we've reached a point of being able to put forward an offer, we would bring that to the city council, re-engage everyone, have a discussion about it, and ultimately, the council would vote whether or not to move forward in pursuing that site.
Thank you, Ms. Kitchen.
Very good. My time's up.
Mr. Valpreto, we appreciate your coming before us. Next speaker, please. Welcome. Please introduce yourself.
Sure. My name is Oscar Zubrian. I'm also here with Sister Susanna, who's a principal of Our Lady Guadalupe School, and Father Larry Tosh, who's our pastor, and Associate Pastor Sergio, Father Sergio?
Perez.
Perez. He's a local boy, by the way. Again, I am with Our Lady Guadalupe School. We're in the 600 block of East California Avenue, which is part of Councilmember Rivera's ward. And as a matter of fact, we met with Councilmember Rivera and a few members from the BPD last week to discuss our issues, and I want to present some of those issues with you tonight. Some of the members that we met with last week were Sergeant Rex Davenport, Karina Ortiz, who is the Community Relations Supervisor, and Officers Morales and Beeson. We have issues as well, like, you know, this is a city-wide issue. Just as a matter of fact, on Monday, a transient homeless person, human being, he was attacked right in front of our church, right in front of our school. Thankfully, the school community did not see that, you know? And if the city, if we collectively cannot put our hands around this issue, I'm afraid, and I pray that it doesn't happen, that our kids will one day be exposed to this violent act. That transient, that person, he's currently in critical condition. We don't know if he's going to make it or not at this point. So, we thank you for the city and council for the efforts you've provided so far. We look forward to those coming to fruition. Some of the issues we've had, we've had loitering, we've had vandalism, we've had transients actually try to set fire in our church. We've had transients go into our bathrooms and get naked, expose themselves, try to take baths. These are bathrooms where our kids also, you know, partake in. So, we have applied resources to these as well. We've added security cameras and privacy gates and whatnot. We just want you guys to please consider us as well when we come up with this great plan. Thank you, and God bless you all.
Thank you very much. Sister Susanna, I didn't see you out there, but thank you for your investment in our children. It's always my honor, every year, when National Catholic Schools Week comes up, just to watch you in action with those precious children, your leadership, your love for them, and your investment in their education. Thank you so much. Next speaker, please. Welcome, Mr. Flores.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. My name is J.R. Flores, and I wanted to address you this evening regarding the epidemic happening in our city, and I do mean epidemic. This isn't a homeless issue. This isn't a housing crisis. This is a drug epidemic. This is a mental health crisis, and if we are not careful, a public hazard health warning. With the human waste that plagues our downtown business and alley and doorways, to the drug paraphernalia left in the playgrounds where my kids used to play, and I get the laws, AB 109, 47, 57, but I refuse. My neighbors refuse. Our city refuses. My community refuses. The citizens refuse to hear that our hands are tied. Our city is under siege. It is not safe. Yesterday, my fiance was told by a vagrant slash street criminal at our neighborhood gas station in Oleander, "Hey, baby, why don't you just take me home with you?" How long till one of them, if not already, starts sexually assaulting women? Just this morning, as she dropped off my son at William Penn, as many other parents dropped off their kids, a drug-induced or mentally deranged man defecated on himself, exposed, wandering about just outside the gates. Our kids can't go to school without being exposed to this. They definitely can't play in the parks as they've been overrun by drug addicts and mentally unstable individuals. And yes, drug addicts and mentally unstable, not homeless. Do they happen to live on the streets? Yes, they do. But these are not the families visiting Louis Gill at the homeless shelter. That guy at the gas station isn't visiting Carlos at the mission. The man this morning isn't the guy visiting Kern Behavioral Health. I applaud the effort of those individuals working those places on the front lines of the real homeless crisis. This, what we are dealing with, is not a homeless crisis. You want to give them low-barrier shelters. Providing drug addicts a safe haven is only enabling the problem. That is no better than the mom that lets her son get high down the hall rather than on the streets. These people will continue to plague our neighborhoods and break into our cars, our homes, and our businesses, harassing the law-abiding, tax-paying citizens of this city. We talk about wraparound services, but the services are already there, and these people aren't taking advantage of them now. What leads you to believe they will once given a place?
Mr. Flores, time is up. Thank you very much.
I had three more seconds, and I have the whole thing.
Just...
I was supposed to have three minutes.
Sir, thank you. Thank you very much. Next speaker, please. Welcome.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, Councilman, I'm Michael Turnipseed. I represent Kern Tax. First of all, I want to thank the mayor for allowing these comments to happen after the staff report so we could be educated on exactly what the city is thinking, which means to me the combination, or the issue. They're going to come back with a contract for your proposal next month, so basically, the decision's going to be made of where it's going to be out of the four because they're going to bring you a proposal. Somehow, you need to get people's input on where they're locating such an important decision. I want to talk about just a couple of things. One thing the city has been really good at for the last decade or longer was the abatement of graffiti. But the abatement of trash, not so good. Abatement of weeds, nonexistent. We have properties that aren't being maintained, both municipal and private. Code compliance needs to get our city back and make, if we're cleaner and nicer, people will act better. When things are decrepit and rundown, then people think they can get away with littering and more loitering. I want to thank the mayor for her statement last Thursday in her press release, saying that she was going to partner with the county in joint efforts to finance these facilities because you were right, there's going to be more than one. There's going to be two, three, four facilities to address the needs that need to take care. And finally, it gets back to that negotiation. This isn't a school site. You know, schools always negotiate in private because they're real estate deals. This, it really has an effect on a lot of people. So, the more transparency the city has, the better. And again, thank you for moving the comment period so we could hear the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Turnipseed. Just a clarification, I don't think I mentioned anything about financing, but partnering, working together, we want to work together as a community to address this very complex issue, and it takes all of us. Next speaker, please. We may have different roles in all of this, but all of us working together, we can address this issue. Welcome, Mr. Martin.
Hi, Matthew Martin. So, first, I'll start by reading the rest of J.R.'s speech here. So, I hear the cries of compassion, but allowing these people to enforce, to do drugs and wander aimlessly unmedicated is not compassionate. Hiring 100 cops that cannot or will not enforce the laws is not going to solve the problems. All of this is going on while priority tonight is spending $390,000 of measure-in money on staging lights outside Rabobank, while we worry about the soccer parks and softball fields, while adopting a new brand and slogan, "Bakersfield, the sound of something better." How about we actually make it better and not just sound better? Thank you. With that, I'd like to say, we have a tremendous drug problem. We're hearing that over and over. The other day, I was out at Arbor Village Mobile Home Park with fellow young Republicans doing a cleanup, and something that really stood, I mean, it'll stick in my brain for a while, is there's two kids, we were picking up, I mean, hundreds of heroin needles and other drugs. I mean, like a third world country, you couldn't believe it. And towards the end of the day, the first day we were doing the cleanup, there was two kids that were outside. The mom was in her recliner in the living room there with a needle in her arm, not paying attention, not around the kids. The kids come out and they're wandering, right, in the mobile home park, and they have no shoes on, right? I mean, it's incredible. So, we get them back inside. I guess what I'm saying is, before we move on to what we need to get, you know, housing for some of these people that need it, they have incredible issues with mental health. And so, we have to address that. Or building them a new fourplex or any of these other things will be all for naught because it won't work, right? They'll be back on the streets. Those new properties we built for them will be rundown overnight. So, I applaud you guys very much for addressing this situation, for dealing with, working with the sheriff and the district attorney, as well as the chief of police, so that we can actually solve this and get a solution that we can get these people off the streets, in jail, get them cleaned up, and so that they can become productive members of society. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martin.
Yep.
Next speaker, please. Welcome, Mr. Crawford.
Hi. My name's Rod Crawford, and my wife and I own Pyrenees Cafe, and we own the Silver Fox downtown. I own two businesses. We have two houses downtown also. I've invested my entire life in being downtown. I love it. It's the best place in the world to be. Best people. We've got so many amazing restaurants, shops, things that are coming in. That being said, last night, I was at the chamber meeting, and I heard two people get up and talk. That made the most sense. One was Kyle Carter, who talked about a piece of property that the mission has out off Union and Ming Avenue. Sounded like a pretty large piece of property, if I misunderstood you. Anyway, and then, and it had a lot of good ideas. And then, Donnie Youngblood came in last night, which, I mean, we've already been talking about Prop 47, and he looked at the chamber members and said, "That's a waste of time. That thing that you're getting ready to build is a waste of time. 80% of the people that are on the streets right now that you're having a problem with downtown are drug abusers, and those are the guys that are breaking out your windows, doing all the damage, and costing you guys thousands and thousands of dollars." And what we were, now, he told me what, or told us what he was going to do with Mrs. Zimmerman and the local judges, that they were going to try and repeal part of this 47 and get these people back in jail where they need to be, where they can get the services that they need. He also said, "He's got 650 beds that are completely empty in that place right now, and another 300 at another facility, and I'm wondering why we're not utilizing this? If we've got these spaces that are already built with beds, they've got doctors, they've got things that we can utilize right now, today, why aren't we using those facilities instead of running out and building something brand-new?" I have another thing that...
Mr. Crawford, your time is up. Thank you.
Thanks.
The issue that you addressed in reference to our sheriff is one that we've been speaking about, meeting with district attorney, with the judges, and just know that there is action because we really do hear that issue. There is clearly a population that is in need of incarceration, and those beds might be appropriate for that. There are multiple solutions to the types of issues that we're confronting, and just know that conversations are going on regarding what you just addressed. So, thank you, Mr. Crawford. Next speaker, please.
I'm Gino Valpreto from Luigi's Restaurant. Mayor, go, council. Thank you all very much for all that you've done, for listening, all of us tonight. All my topics on my notes have pretty much been covered. One of the things that has not been covered is the extra taxes that we've raised, and I'm using numbers here that I'm not completely positive about, but somewhere in the range of 10 to 11 million. The immediate action could be with the security officers that were brought up today, the rapid-response teams. I think there was originally spoken of one team. I would love that number to be much larger. We'd like to have a portion of that, somewhere between 4 and 5 million. We have numbers that we can make work, that we'd have just more security officers or the police, if we can get that involved, available on the streets, just to ward the addicted that we're speaking of, keep them away from the streets and from the businesses and from the vandalism part of it. I love the idea that was just spoken about with the community prosecution program and with the DA and all the things that you guys have going on. Jaclyn, thank you so much for your, all the work that you did in that, and then all the people that run all the shelters. I know you guys are doing a great job, but there really is several aspects to this besides the homeless. It is the addicted, and I know there's just so much effort and work and time and everybody putting into it. I'd love to stay involved, and I just appreciate everybody doing what they're doing. So, let's keep moving forward as a team and as a community, and I know we can make this better, but we need to do it soon. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Valpreto. Madam Clerk, are there any other speaker cards on this topic?
We have one final speaker, Mayor, Nick Ortiz.
And while Mr. Ortiz is coming up here, I know some of you had more to say than the two minutes allowed. You are welcome to come back. You're welcome to write to us, and please do express your comments to us, contact us, and come back at the next meeting. Mr. Ortiz?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I want to thank staff for their very thoughtful proposal, and their very thoughtful and considered action. I think that you have done a very good job in going and looking at things and trying to figure out the best pathway forward. I appreciate everybody on staff. I appreciate what Chief Martin is doing. We're a downtown property owner at the chamber. We own about a half a block of property, and so, we're faced with the same issues that our member businesses are faced with every day. We feel the increased enforcement down there. We know that staff is trying. We know that you all are trying. I told your colleagues yesterday at the Board of Supervisors that this is probably one of the toughest challenges that you are all going to have to face in public service. I do not envy you, but I appreciate your leadership. One of the things that I think of when I think of the work that we've done on branding is that people may criticize something better, especially right now, but we have a great city. We have so many things going for us. I love this place. That's why I do what I do. And the sound of something better gives us something to aspire to always. We can always make this place better. I appreciate all of our member businesses who have talked on this issue, who are thinking about this issue, and if I could encourage you to do one thing, that is to act as swiftly as possible. There will never be the right location for a shelter. There will never be the right situation, but if not that place, then where? If not now, when? I would encourage you, as a process point, if there's any way to fast-track any of staff's recommendations, a special meeting even next week on some of these items, if possible, under the Brown Act, I would do it. Your constituents are asking for action. I am very pleased that your staff and you all as leaders are trying to deliver. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ortiz, and thank you to all of you who spoke tonight. Thank you to those of you who continue to contact us and give us your input. Your input is shaping the recommendations of staff, and so, please, continue to give us your input, engage with us, be part of the solution. It truly takes all of us. We need you. We need your perspectives as we work together on this very difficult issue. And now, we are going to return this to our council for comment and then action. Staff has asked us to take action on four different items. So, what I'm going to recommend that we do this evening is make your general comments, but let's just focus on each segment. So, we have an opportunity to address each of those four issues, and then we'll come back for any final comments. So, if you want to open up with your more general and then focus on support downtown clean teams as your first area of commenting. Councilmember Gonzalez?
Okay, thank you, Mayor. I had prepared to make five different recommendations tonight and motions regarding what we've heard tonight, and so, I plan to outline that in my comments tonight, and then we can take it how you'd like to proceed. First of all, I'd like to thank all of the property and business owners of downtown who have come and spoken to us tonight and who have communicated to me directly over the last year, two years, regarding the homelessness crisis. It's not lost on any of us how frustrated you are and how frustrated we all are regarding this issue on many different levels. Clearly, there's a human element, that there are individuals who are in need. We know that. We know that there are people who are seeking out services... there are people who are seeking out services and who are desperately looking for shelter. We know that. And the reason why we know that is because both existing shelters, the Bakersfield Rescue Mission and the Homeless Center, are at capacity. And they have been at capacity. There are people who want to go into shelter. So we know we have a homelessness crisis that we have to address. And we're gonna do that by introducing this Low Barrier Navigation Center. We have to. We're gonna address it by adding 40 beds at both existing facilities. That's also something that we just have to do. But we also know that we have an issue regarding crime, whether it be property crime, drug addiction, safety issues in the downtown area and all over. And we have to address that as well. And I want to recognize Vice Mayor Parlier, because he brought up to the council the idea of the community prosecution program several months ago. And in fact, we were able to fund this program, thanks to Measure N, at least with regard to contracting two district attorneys in the amount of $300,000 in this fiscal year. That's a step forward, but we have to act on that. And in fact, I know that we've been in conversation with various different supervisors at the county, and even the sheriff. And we need to address this issue and get it going however, however we can and whatever it takes. We need to make sure it happens. And so I have a few questions that I want to ask staff, but I just want to lay out for the community, the way I see it in my mind. It really is a multifaceted approach that the city is taking. And I really appreciate Ms. Kitchen and the City Manager's Office and all of staff for all of their hard work on preparing these responses. It really is about homeless services. It's about mitigating the impact of the experiences downtown. And we're doing that through the clean teams, through the security contracts for the downtown core. And then it's also addressing those safety concerns, those issues regarding crime. And so I want to ask staff, and Ms. Kitchen, I can't see you. There you are. Okay. You know, regarding the emergency shelter, we know that this, or navigation center, however we'd like to call it, we know we need to work on this post-haste. What is the timeline, anticipated timeline, to get this thing up and running?
Councilmember Gonzalez, it depends on the location. They're all a little different. But it would be dependent on escrow and how that goes. That's always kind of unknown. But potentially, it could be as little as, I'd say, 90 to 120 days until it's fully operational and functional. But again, if there's a more complex site and depending on other factors, it could be a little bit longer. But the point here is that staff hears loud and clear, the city hears loud and clear, that this is a major priority for the community. But we do want to do it right, and we do want to present something publicly and have it be a part of the discussion before the council. But again, we hope to bring something before the council, hopefully as soon as the next hearing, which is two weeks from now, but potentially by the October hearing, which is about four weeks from now.
Okay. And you referenced earlier the construction of 80 new emergency beds and the two existing shelters. What is the status on those facilities, or those additional beds?
So that is between the two facilities. The first is at the Mission. They are going through a conditional use permit process right now. And I expect that conditional use permit to go back before the Board of Zoning Adjustment in October. They are, this will be their second attempt at getting a conditional use permit. I should point out that previously, they were looking to go off-site, outside of their existing footprint, and expand that way. They heard from the community that that wasn't desirable, so they have gone back to the drawing board as well, and have reexamined a way to expand within their own footprint and not leave their current parcel. I think that this is a good compromise, and I do know that the Mission is planning on doing a workshop and inviting the community in to talk about it. I think they're gonna be kicking that off in the next few days, so there should be notice coming. The other 40 beds are at the Bakersfield Homeless Center. We are working closely with that team. City staff is helping them through the process of construction management, looking at how they need to expand and readjust within their footprint at their facility as well. Mr. Gill is here this evening. He might be able to share more details on the status of that project.
Mr. Gill, are you prepared to comment on this, or? We can talk about it at the next meeting, if you'd like. Okay. Thank you, sir. Jackie, Ms. Kitchen, I'd also like to ask you about the community prosecution program, because I think this has a lot of promise. I understand that there are 600 beds available in the county jail. I've heard that the sheriff has indicated that the cost to run that facility is around $1.6 million. What has been the conversation that we've had with the county regarding this project?
This idea has been kicking around in some variants of form for quite a while. The most recent efforts have been our office contacting supervisors. Scrivener and Couch, Supervisor Scrivener in particular, reports to me that he set up a meeting as a result of that with the district attorney and the sheriff. And out of that came this price, which is for a one-year cost for 120 jail cells. And Mr. Scrivener promised me that we would have a follow-up meeting that would include all of those parties to discuss details of how that might work. And that is in the process of being set up. I think we've heard tonight reaffirmation that while a humanitarian approach with services in the form of the low-barrier shelter is an essential part, that the criminal part is also essential, and we hope to partner with the county on that.
Well, I appreciate that. Where rubber meets the road is really about funding, and how we can be supportive and a good partner, at least in ensuring that when we are sending individuals to the county jail, that we're paying for those operation dollars, or we're providing those operation dollars. My request is, I'm gonna include tonight, is that we negotiate a contract with the county, not just with the district attorney's office, but also with the sheriff's department. And we, I'm gonna ask staff to come back with a budget reallocation, so that we can negotiate up to $1 million in funding in order to make this program happen soon. So that would be my first point in my recommendations. In addition to that, I'd like to ask that staff return to council with a contract for the downtown cleaning services at our next council meeting, September 25. Likewise, that they return back to council with a contract for private security, again, at our next council meeting. And that they return to council with a budget appropriation of $155,000 to support the new staff for the collaborative. And finally, that they return to council with a purchase or lease contract for the recommended property within 30 days.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Gonzalez.
So, Mayor, just to clarify, so those are the items--
Yes.
--of my motion.
Yes. So I'm gonna have, we're gonna take one at a time, and just in case anybody wants to comment on those, and we'll move on, and then we'll vote on your motion.
Okay.
Okay, colleagues, just starting with the support downtown clean teams, that's the first item that staff asked us to take action on. Are there any comments that you would wish to make? Councilmember Rivera?
I'm gonna make a full set of comments here, because my brain isn't big enough to parse this out. So, I'm in, I'm in full support of the items Councilmember Gonzalez has made a motion on. But I do think there are a few, there are a few points, I think some, maybe an amendment or two I'd like him to consider, and then some other perks that I, some other parts that I think also deserve our attention and resources now rather than later. So I think it might make sense to take it from the top, and so I will. If I start with item one, which is the support of downtown clean teams, the staff memorandum basically spells out two options. We either contract with a private party, or we retain or expand the homeless center program we have, which I think has been very successful over time. I don't think you specified one way or the other, but I do think it's actually very important that maybe perhaps we utilize the money to attempt to employ some of the folks who were also trying to get off of the streets. So I would, I would request that we actually specifically pursue a contract to expand that program with the homeless center, rather than, you know, choosing a separate option. I understand that may take some time, so if we, if we need an interim fix from a private company, that's great. And I hate to sign up Louis Gill for any more work. But I think it makes sense, when you consider that we heard 79% of the people we captured in the point-in-time count just here recently, 79 of them had zero income. And we're talking about trying to impact a problem that's persistent. It seems to me we should be utilizing these dollars to employ folks who have no income. So that would be my first comment.
At some point, Councilmember Rivera, may staff comment?
Yes.
Whenever you are open to that.
Absolutely. On the second item, increased policing and security, I think the, and again, fully behind this, I would just wanna, I guess I, for the sake of clarity, you heard from at least one other entity outside of the downtown area today. And you saw in staff's presentation, we have homeless encampments in areas outside of downtown Bakersfield, that when we talk about increased policing and potentially retaining private security, that we're talking about more than just downtown. And I don't know that that appears clear to me right now. I'm fully supportive of supporting the Kern County Homeless Collaborative. I remember working with a lot of those folks years ago, and I think they do great work. On item number four, that's the construction of additional emergency shelter beds. You know, time is of the essence, and so I appreciate Councilmember Gonzalez's interest in trying to get something to us within 30 days. I think the only, the only other component to that, that I think is, is something I just want to ensure we're talking about, and I know we're having conversations with the county about a lot of things, is they just earlier this week decided to move forward with their own facility. We've seen how this, we've seen how this has worked in the past with animal control, and it's dysfunctional, and it doesn't make sense. And I want to make sure that we're not each taking different approaches to solving the same problem, especially when you consider that the metro Bakersfield area is the biggest, biggest area affected by this issue inside of Kern County. So I also thinks that, I also think that means that they should perhaps be ponying up a cent or two as a part of the work we're doing here. On item five, I had no additional thoughts on that. Item number six, that's the community prosecution program. I just want to clarify, the max someone can be sentenced is 90 days? Could an attorney answer that for me, or someone?
There have been different discussions at different times. The first versions we heard were 90 days. The more recent versions have been a year. It's something that needs to be settled and further discussions with the DA and the sheriff.
Okay. So I would certainly argue that if we're gonna, we're going to expend as much money as we're talking about on this program, that we look for something a little bit more permanent than, say, 90 days. I think we get into a real unhealthy cycle if we're literally cycling folks in and out on a 90-day basis. So I'd really hope that we push for longer periods of time. And I, and I say that for, because I'm specifically, you know, talking about the folks who are, are part of a criminal element that folks are here talking about tonight. The humanitarian component to this is not lost on me, and I disagree with anyone who argues that every single homeless person on the street is a drug addict. You're wrong. So I don't believe the answer is putting all of them in jail. But I don't think 90 days is enough. And so I'd push, I'd ask that we pursue something else. And I think, I think the last item on the use of facilities is also very important. And I am fully supportive of that as well. The, the one item we didn't hear about tonight was, was permanent housing. So in one of the slides, we, staff actually broke it down very well. You have, you have the temporary issue we're trying to solve now, and the ultimate solution to solving homelessness, which is getting someone into a home. We're talking about spending quite a bit of money on that middle piece, and we are not, at least to my knowledge, talking in a detailed way about what we do when we have a facility with hundreds and hundreds of beds, and hundreds and hundreds of people that we have no place to put them. Remember, we, we know 79% of them have zero income. So we're fooling ourselves if we think we have a temporary facility and that solves a problem. So what I heard from the staff presentation was that we have at least $5 million budgeted in permanent transitional housing. Did I understand that correctly? I would ask, or I'd perhaps make an additional motion that, or ask, how about this? I'll ask that Councilmember Gonzalez indulge me in consider also asking that staff start working immediately on releasing that $5 million. I don't even care if it's just in the form of an RFP. We do, we've done RFPs all the time for affordable housing projects. Let's get RFPs out there so that we can hear what folks actually have to offer. And if they have something creative on the permanent side that either blends supportive housing or some other element to get folks out of this cycle, then I think we should be collecting those ideas now. And I would ask that we get going on that in earnest now. Keep in mind, it's taken us, I mean, it's taken us nearly a year to get to this point right now. And I think if we don't start talking about that now, we don't start laying the groundwork for that now, while we're also talking about all these other issues, then we're gonna be back here in a year, very frustrated, very angry, with a whole new problem in our hands, on our hands. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. The goal, the goal--
Oh, sorry. He said he would give me an opportunity to make a couple of--
Mr. Tandy.
Thank you. Just a couple. First, the city was the original, and I think is the only party currently employing the homeless from the shelters on a massive basis. I believe we're currently at about 1.5 to 1.7 million a year. And we're proud of that, and we wish to continue that. With respect to hazardous materials and dangerous materials, I'm not sure it's the best idea in the world to take a homeless person and have them work on that when there are specialty firms in town who are trained and licensed, and who on a regular basis respond to hazardous material spills, wastewater backups in homes and businesses and the like. And so I would ask your indulgence in considering in the future both the economy and how fast it can occur, because the equipment is in possession of the private sector. It is not necessarily in possession of the homeless shelter and would have to be acquired, which would delay the implementation. So, no permanent decision, but we would like to keep both active. And yes, it is the intention of the security workforces that they work based upon call concentration that would go outside of the downtown, as well as within the downtown and Old Town Kern. But there won't be enough to be added to cover every need in town, and so that needs to be understood, that some level of call concentration--
I don't need other parts of town. I just need southeast Bakersfield.
Everything else, I have no comment on. Sounds fine.
Okay. Thank you. I actually saw Mr. Gill pop up, so I thought I'd like to maybe get his thoughts on that first item.
Thank you, Councilmember Rivera. Mayor, specifically about the clean teams downtown, our staff are going through hazardous material handling training right now, and bloodborne pathogen training. Additionally, we found out we need to add a pollution rider to our insurance because of the work that we'll be doing. So we are very intentionally, very specifically, making sure that our teams are absolutely ready, capable, to deal with all that they find on our streets.
Thank you. So I guess I'd just reaffirm that I think the best use of those dollars is then putting it in the hands of folks who really actually need it. it in the hands of, of folks who really actually need it and are part of this challenge we have. Thank you.
We're really grateful that Adventist Health has stepped up to help with this biohazard training and just making sure that our homeless persons who are working are safe. They've also stepped up just in the short term to provide three months of services downtown for a two-person crew, as has Congressman Kevin McCarthy and Assemblyman Vince Fong. This is just to supplement what's going on. We need an added boost right now, and certainly would welcome anybody else. The city will be taking action also, but this is just private funders choosing to invest in our downtown. Councilmember Rivera made a point about the longer-term housing, and our goal in developing these shelters is not to keep people there forever. That is not the goal. The goal is to move people on in their journey, and it is essential that we continue to plan ahead. So we want to make sure that those of us who are working on the prevention end, that we're taking care of that, emergency shelter, all of these things, bridge housing as we move them on to permanent supportive housing and independence, that's eventually where we need to go as a community. Councilmember Vice Mayor Parlier.
Thank you, Mayor. First off, just to stay in line with the theme and how we're taking things, I'm in support of Councilmember Gonzalez's motions along with the addendums from Willie. Now, I'm a retired cop. I was a state narcotics agent with the, with the state, and I believe the first role of government is to protect the people. So I want to ask the expert in the room to come up to the microphone. Now, Chief, I, I know that, you know, we're in the process of hiring 100 new police officers. You're starting that pipeline now, but is there anything from overtime to anything else that we can do right now to assist your department in helping with this situation?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Parlier, or Vice Mayor Parlier, actually speaking with the city manager about four weeks ago, we started a couple of things. As the council is well aware, we have our impact team, which handles quality of life issues, and we partner with code enforcement and other agencies dealing with the encampments. But we also created, we took resources from other divisions and created a third impact team that now works from 6:00 in the evening till 2:00 in the morning. And I also created two problem-oriented policing cars, which I will give you a little bit of what they've done over the last three weeks. City Manager Tandy mentioned that when we're talking about the private security, this is going to be call-driven, not report-driven. Report data can be almost a week late, where call, call-related data I can get within 48 hours, so I can direct the private security resources once we start down that road to take care of things anywhere in the city, not just downtown or Old Town Kern. That's the crux of where most of it happens, but as you'll see, there's been some things that we've been doing that will address a lot of these. So the team has partnered with code enforcement during the encampments. We also put together a undercover sting with alcohol beverage control to look at those establishments downtown, Old Town Kern, and in the old carnation track, to look at those establishments that are selling alcohol to obviously intoxicated individuals, and we will go after their licenses. There's a, we're looking at power washing areas. We also put together a team that focused on property crimes, quality of life issues, and prostitution enforcement in the area of 21st Street and Union, Old Town Kern, and they contacted several homeless individuals. We partnered with the Investigations Division in regards to residential burglary prevention in the area of south of Stockdale Highway. Again, all of these are data-driven. We cleared eight separate offenses for high-dollar thefts at Valley Plaza by using this third team that we put together that was going through data-driven types of things. And we offered to provide, this last team offered to provide missions and homeless services to 14 individuals, however, there were no takers. Problem-oriented policing team cars who just go to what we call hotspots since, let's see, the last two weeks of August, they made 52 arrests, 18 citations, 35 business checks. A business check for us is where we see a business that may be low on lighting, or there's shrubbery or things where the officers can't actually make a, by driving by, so they actually get out and check the businesses, and we've contacted 199 homeless individuals. It is imperative for them to collect the data and the things that Louis and Carlos need, so they break this data down for me. It's homeless minors, 17 and below, elderly homeless, 65 and above, homeless adults, 18 to 64, homeless with pets, homeless females with children. So we're collecting real-time data so we can actually make real decisions, not based on emotional decisions. I don't make emotional decisions, I make intellectual decisions. So also, this team, problem-oriented policing team, their primary focus is shopping centers, business districts, including parks, within the auto mall, north and central zones, which is west of 99, north of Ming Avenue, downtown business and Old Town Kern. They're looking for prowling activities to vehicles, businesses and residents, seeking to locate quality of life crimes, handling loitering calls for service near school campuses. A lot of this, the third team was created, and that is their normal working hours, the problem-oriented policing teams, they are on overtime, and overtime is not sustainable. So we're looking for long-term measures. We have 39 in the academy now, we have 80 some odd in a background to start an academy in December, so we're being very aggressive in getting the officers that we're going to need to, to reach this 100 officer goal. But two things on that. One, the 100 officer goal was based on 2014 data. So is it, is the number really 100 officers that we need in 2019, 2020? That's just something that this, that's just something that this council needs to think about as we're going forward.
Chief?
Yes?
Can I just stop you right there? Can you come back or via through the city manager's office? I think all of us would be really curious what that true number would be.
We can do that. But we've heard here at the diocese from very frustrated folks, I got into this business to take bad guys to jail, and that's what the 600 folks across the street got in this business to do. We're not sitting on our hands, we're working within the confines of the laws that we're afforded, and like you said, this problem, POP teams arrested 52 individuals, the green team has arrested 28 individuals, and my blue and gold team has arrested 38 individuals, and that's within the last month. So the statements that are said at the podium are absolutely correct. There are three different types of individuals that we're looking at, but from a police department standpoint, we're not sitting on our hands, we are looking at those types of things. Councilmember Rivera, just a little clarification, when you talked about the 90 days, it depends on the underlying crime that they're arrested for is the time that they can get. So we have to be, if you're arrested for burglary, they're not, it's, they don't qualify for the 90 days that we're talking about. So when we're talking about getting these beds with the sheriff's department, depending on what the underlying crime is, that determines how much time they'll get. Now, when they're talking about the 90 days, they're talking about somebody we find, and their only crime is under the influence. Those types of things are the things that I've been in contact and talking with the sheriff and the district attorney about, how do we get them in a position where they're going to be there for that 90 days and at least start that process versus getting a citation and sent back out, and they're out victimizing the folks who we've heard from. So we're taking very proactive steps. All of that to say to your question is, just keep supporting me on what we're doing right now. I think moving forward with the private security is going to just be a force multiplier, that's more eyes and ears out there for us. This is not going, we're not expecting them to go out and make arrests or anything, but directing things so we can take a very strategic and surgical approach to this versus just going out haphazardly and we're going to take care of things. I think that's the best way for us to proceed forward.
Now, I assume there's going to be some sort of communication if we do this contracted service with the police department, so?
Yes. The plan right now is if we were to move forward, they would report directly to the two new zone commanders that I have, and the zone commanders get the data daily, they go through that data, and we will look at calls for service, the reports from the problem-oriented policing team, because what I don't want is we're just moving the crime, we're moving the individuals. We want to actually have an impact to arrest those who need to be arrested with the community prosecution, the ones that need services as we're collecting this data, then we, we will go with the homeless collaborative and our partners. But just moving people, we've been doing that for 10 years, that doesn't work. We have to arrest those who are criminals and hold them accountable, and then we have to deal with the ones that have substance abuse and mental health issues. I'm not a political guy, you know that, but when we talk about repealing Prop 47 and 57, I applaud the efforts, I'm a hun, behind it 100%, but I'm not so optimistic when we have people in Sacramento who are talking about, you've got a bill now where they want parolees and people who are currently on parole to be able to vote and to be able to sit on juries. Now, I'm a police officer, I can't sit on a jury. So these are the types of things that we're, we're fighting, these are the types of things that the district attorney and I and the sheriff are working on to try to get some common sense solutions to our problems in Sacramento, but this is an uphill battle. And, you know, I don't want to rain on, because we're doing some great things here, and Ms. Kitchen talked about all the great things that we're doing, but we need to be realistic and we need to be surgical, and we cannot stop the momentum that we have here in making the folks in Sacramento know that this, this is just, it's unacceptable.
I totally agree with your comments, Chief. You know, as you know, I was with a bureau, Bureau of Narcotics Enforcement, within the California Department of Justice. That was the oldest-serving narcotics bureau in the history of the United States, predated DEA, and there were several programs within Bureau of Narcotics Enforcement, including the Violence Suppression Unit. And I remember when I was working that we would take 40, 50 agents, we'd flood an area for local communities that were experiencing problems that we're experiencing right now to be able to tap down that crime, and that no longer exists because the state eliminated, eliminated that bureau a few years ago. So I don't even know where to reach out necessarily for state assistance to be able to get those people in to be able to help out a local agency. Now, when you mentioned moving crime, I totally agree with you. Right now, obviously downtown is ground zero, and I think at some point we're going to get our, our hands around it, but I don't want the balloon to bulge, because you mentioned the auto mall, Valley Plaza, quarter in, quarter out, two of our big, biggest economic tax producers are retail sales and new and used car sales, which is for most part, Valley Plaza and the auto mall, and I'm dealing with homeless around both of those institutions or facilities right now. And like I said, I just don't want the balloon to bulge out of downtown, in effect, not only my area, but any of my colleagues either, and I know that's your approach too, and I thank you for your comments, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. I think I'll just go on down the list also. Downtown cleaning, I just wanted to make sure that people in the audience who hadn't read the staff report, we, we are talking about cleaning the feces, and that's why the discussion about hazardous waste and stuff. And I guess I would, I agree with Councilmember Rivera that if we can work with the homeless center and get those people working, that that is a good idea, but obviously it, it depends on price, and so I'd like to see a price from both so we know what we're talking about if, if we decide that we're reinvesting, but it costs us more. On the private security, what, I didn't see, what kind of dollars are we, is there any direction or number of people?
Councilmember Smith, the chief is in negotiations with security companies, and I can tell you that we are in the range of $40,000 to $60,000 a month as a discussion point, perhaps a little higher, and, but, but it depends on how many people are available and how much capacity the police department has to add the workload to the supervisory group. So it will be substantial, but not a cure.
And this idea is until our police get enough through the academy?
Oh, I think it's, I think it's until the storm passes and the hurricane has gone on to.
Okay. The homeless collaborative, I, I think that's great, the, I was in initial discussions when we started talking about that, and for the city and county to come together and work with the collaborative and give direction where that had been faltering is a very positive Obviously, emergency shelter, we've been talking about and look forward to that coming back in a couple of weeks. The rapid response team's great success, really appreciate it, we're like 100 cleanups already or more, and it's making a big difference, I appreciate that. The community prosecution program and working with the sheriff, I, I just would second, yeah, the million dollars sounds good, and, and again, partnering with the county, and we're willing to put our money up, and they have a facility and work together, I think's a great thing. And the clarification, use of facilities is, is important, that parks are not for camping, parks are for playing, and medians are not for camping and for playing, and hopefully we can enforce that. So I think we're heading in the right direction, appreciate staff's work. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Freeman.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I want to thank staff for a great presentation and a great effort of pulling this all together. I'd like to see us move into implementation now, so I'm not going to waste a lot of time on repeating what my colleagues have said. I'm totally supportive. I think we have to implement because we'll learn what works and doesn't work. We don't know yet. We have, we have to get into the game now, and we'll adjust as we go along, but the important thing, which I think we have here, is the commitment to solve the problem. That's what will drive this whole thing, is a continuing commitment to make this our number-one priority and solve this problem, and we'll learn as we go. So I'm, I'm supportive of Councilmember Gonzalez's motion, and Rivera with various amendments, so I'm ready to go.
Councilmember Weir.
Thank you, Mayor. So, so I would like, I would like maybe City Attorney to kind of read back what the motions are, because we were asked to approve four things tonight, and I think there was a motion for five, and I'm not exactly sure why that fifth motion, motion was made.
Correct. Mayor, Councilmember Weir, the fifth motion that I have was actually Councilmember Gonzalez's first statement, which was for staff, the direction to staff to come back and have a contract for up to $1 million to partner with the county and the sheriff to form the community prosecution team, and that's, that's what I has as your, the fifth item, which was actually first in your statement.
That's correct.
And so all night tonight, we've been talking about the homeless, and you know, some people think they're all criminals out there, some think they're homeless, but you know, the reality is, it's, it's a combination of both, and we're going to need some kind of facility to handle both. to handle both. We saw a presentation tonight, hopefully that can handle, um, the true homeless, the true needy. And we've also heard a lot about doing this right and getting it right. And so, Mr. Tandy, kind of tell me where you are in negotiations on, on the community, community prosecution and the cost, because when I hear Councilmember Rivera say, well, ninety days isn't gonna do it, or it might do it, I'm not sure that we even know exactly what that contract's gonna look like, and I don't want to do anything here just for political expediency, so, um, could you kind of tell us where we're at with that?
Councilmember Weir, uh, the, the discussion of this topic went into a stasis for a period of months, and the sheriff was expressing concerns about finances. When we recently found out that the county had two million dollars budgeted for homeless issues, um, I contacted Supervisor Scrivner and Couch and said, you know, that's a great program. That's, that's law enforcement, that's getting people off the street, they're into treatment. The four walls already exist. It's more, it's more cost-effective on a per-individual basis to do that jail program than it is to do the other things, although they, they address different populations, so...
Right.
And only after Mr. Scrivner, um, had an internal meeting with the DA and the sheriff, did we, did we get a number, and the number was 1.6 for 120 cells for males. There's also a female number, but we don't really have that need. So a meeting's being set up to continue discussions, and, and Councilmember Gonzalez's motion gives us a parameter for sharing. I guess we'll, we would have the line, share that cost with a million, but it gives us a parameter to go back to the county and say, yes, we want to partner and we want to share, but we don't want to fund every dime. You have two million dollars for homelessness programming, you put in the 600,000 necessary. How they will react to that, I don't know. I think most everybody right now would just like to have us give them money, uh, and I mean, every day in my office, I have somebody come in or make a call that is to that effect, and so that's something we're just gonna go through. But I, I appreciate council guidance in that regard because it gives us a, a basis for going back and saying, well, yes, we'll share, we would like your participation, but here's our, uh, here's our contribution offer, and you should cover the balance. So where that will go, I don't know, but I'm interested in pursuing it and seeing where it does go.
It seems like that is an integral part of this plan.
Yes, sir.
And it seems like, okay, let me ask you this. What is the timeframe, what do you think the timeframe is for right now to have a, a contract or an agreement?
On the community prosecution? We, as a city, would need to go through a little reallocation of some of our dollar allocations as currently made to shift some of the long-term housing money into shorter-term services, and we would need to go back to the Oversight Committee, but I don't see those steps as taking any substantial time. The only thing that will take time will be how soon the DA and the sheriff can gear up when we reach an agreement and staff their own facilities, and that conversation has not yet taken place.
And let me ask this question. So in order... So we find an individual, and what are our choices? And is, if, if, if the police come across an individual and they feel like this individual's in a situation he shouldn't be in? So my understanding is we have to have a place to take that person, or we have to have a bed available for them, unless, I mean, unless they've just committed a crime, of course, but...
So your assumption is this is perhaps a drug, drug usage or drug-related crime, and you want, you're talking about the steps or necessary procedures to put them into this system? Okay, thank you.
Mayor, Councilmember Weir, if I understand your question correctly, a guidance has been given to the police department that when they are out, particularly in the downtown core, that we try to use the penal code first and foremost as a citation and follow that normal process. Again, that can be anything in the penal code, even the drug code, violation of parole, failures to appear, et cetera. Those are the encouraged, and those are the, we encourage the police department to use those as the primary citation, and my understanding and talking with the district attorney's office is that they are gonna be actively pursuing those. The second step that the police department has is they can then turn to our Bakersfield Municipal Code, and hopefully tonight, you're gonna be amending part of that, which will give us some additional tools, but any aspect of the Bakersfield Municipal Code can also be a, can also be a criminal citation, it can be an administrative citation, and again, to that extent, if there's something that we can do, that would be the second alternative for law enforcement, but we realize that given the resources or the lack of resources at the DA's office, that the citation, the criminal citation for the municipal code is not gonna be as strong as the penal code. So right now, and I think the chief would agree with me, we are having success when we contact people in the street right now, we're having success in finding a penal code violation, or a health and safety code, or a state law basically, that is tying these people over and giving us the ability to book them and to go through that process. Does that answer, does that answer your question? And my understanding in talking with the DA, and I know that my conversations have not been as current as the city manager's office, is that the DA is interested in those drug cases and using the beds at the sheriff's office for some form of a deferred entry of judgment. So when there is a drug-type case, encouraging those individuals to take a lighter sentence, but agreeing that they must serve it within the sheriff's office, and they will get a lighter sentence if they promise that at the conclusion of the sentence, whatever that sentence may be, that they then promise to enter into a drug rehabilitation program, and a portion of those beds, it's my understanding, is going to be used for that. And council, as you know, has already budgeted, as part of the budget process, three hundred thousand dollars that can immediately be used for an MOU with the district attorney's office. So as the city manager said, part of that is, um, we can do the MOU very quickly, but how long it takes the DA and the sheriff to actually get up to speed to utilize those beds for those purposes is really within their, within their barnyard. And then we, of course, would have to go through the processes, as Mr. Tandy indicated, to increase the three hundred thousand dollars to the million if that's eventually what the council would, would so desire.
I think the motion was to have a million for the program that was in addition to the three hundred, was it not?
Well, that was my understanding. Okay.
Correct.
So... I'm wondering why, I, I am not comfortable offering a million dollars for something that I don't know what is actually going to cost us, and without knowing exactly what we're going to get and the ultimate price for what we're going to pay, I think offering that out is a big mistake. It is an integral part of what we need to do. I understand it's going to happen, but I'd much prefer that we have something done, an agreement in place, that we know exactly what we're voting on. It, I don't think it matters if we vote tonight, or if we, next meeting, or the meeting after that. I would much prefer knowing exactly what that cost is gonna be and, and what we're exposed to than just offering up a million dollars because, well, that's already done. We know it's gonna cost more than that.
We're asking you to take no binding action until you would have the document in hand that you're referring to. I would view this more as being a negotiating position.
Okay, well, usually in a negotiating position, I don't tell them what my negotiation is.
In this case, they wanted us...
And that, and that is exactly what my problem is here.
In this case, they wanted us to pay it all.
In this case, good luck. But I'm not comfortable with that, and I usually don't disclose my negotiation positions prior to entering into a contract. So that part of this, I am not going to support, and in order to do that, we can't take a motion on all, all of them. So that is my concern. I know we're gonna do it, and when it comes to the, the right time and we're gonna do this right, then that's the time to make a motion on that. For me, it's not tonight. Thanks.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, when we started the meeting, we had a full, a full room. Appreciate that, and we still have a lot of people here, which shows the, just the level of concern and the level of, um, just, just the level of the importance of the subject that we're discussing tonight. And so you've given us the opportunity to let you know the priority that we, the, the hard work that we've been doing. Jackie, you gave a, just a great presentation, and just full of content and obvious, obviously a lot of hours involved, and believe me, we have taken this very seriously. You know, it's just interesting, I'm still getting calls, "Do you realize we have a homeless problem?", and out of concern, you know, we do, and we are very aware, and we have been very aware for a long time, and we, we've made it our top priority. But I appreciate also, Jackie, making it clear that, you know, we do value our, our taxpayer dollars, and we don't want to do it wrong, but we're now to the point, I, I, I was just, it was very encouraging in closed session because we, we have some good, you know, we have a good plan, and we're, we're, we value, we made it very clear that it's, it's, you know, still very in closed session, but we're, we've been working very hard on this, and, uh, you know, the, the pitiful, um, pitiful news reports about the vandalism, it's pitiful, we don't like it, it's horrible, and so, yes, we have all different types of homeless, and we are, um, we have made a commitment to help those that, that want help, and there are many that do, and we are in a position to help them. But we also have those that are, just aren't to the point yet where they realize they need help, and they, uh, so we have a, you know, we have a, a plan in place for that, and, and the county is gonna be working, we're gonna be working together with the county. So I'm encouraged, and I appreciate the many of you that are still here, and like I say, you've given us the opportunity to share, and we've gotten a lot of criticism, but believe me, we know there's a problem, we care very much that there is a problem, and we are, we are a team, um, we, we are, you know, we are wanting to do it right. We have a great police chief, um, so we have a great council, and, uh, you know, we have different ideas in some areas, but number one, we are wanting to do it right, and we will end up doing it right, and very, very soon, you know, we are to the point now where, where we're able to, um, you know, just, just do it right. So we care, appreciate the staff, all the many hours of, of hard work, and, and just the, the, um, um, information that we've taken the time to see what other, what's working for other communities. So, uh, anyway, it's been a, it's been a great meeting. I, I, I am really very encouraged because, uh, you know, we, we've given the community an opportunity to come and speak, which is wonderful how we have our process of, of the, you know, it has, they, they mentioned a, a, an open forum, well, that, that's what it, this has been, and it, it was handled right, giving the, the staff report first, um, just to let everybody know what, what we are in the process of doing, but every, everyone that spoke tonight just had, you know, had something important to say, and we've taken notes, and, you know, our staff, we, we've, we, we've taken everything seriously, so appreciate everybody that is here tonight and, and feeling the pain. Boy, we, we've, we've, we've had more than our share, and the, the report was that our homeless situation has doubled, more than doubled within the last year. So that's not easy to deal with, but we, we know, you know, we're, we know that it's, it's a problem, and we are working hard to, to correct the problem, and, and we're not just doing nothing, we're not sitting on our hands. Thank you for that good term, uh, police chief. We're sure not, and so we're all working together, and, and we all know that it's top priority, that it's, it's, it's time now to pass time, but now we're able to do it right, and we will be doing it right, so, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Sullivan. Uh, colleagues, I don't see any other requests to speak. Councilmember Gonzalez, do you wish to amend?
Okay. In the spirit of cooperation and, um, in recognition of what my colleague, Councilmember Weir, has stated, I do want to amend the, the fifth point, so let me just read the motion as it's revised, if I may. I'd like to make the motion tonight, the direct staff to, one, return to council with a contract for downtown cleaning services before, or at the next council meeting on September 25th. Two, to return to council with a contract for private security at the next council meeting on September 25th. Return to council with a budget appropriation of a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars to support the new staff for the collaborative. Return to council with a purchase or lease contract for a recommended property for the Lowbury Shelter within thirty days. To return to council with a contract with the county of Kern that includes not only funds for two prosecuting deputy district attorneys for the city, but also includes funding for the hundred county jail cell beds to be negotiated. And finally, to direct staff to be, to begin a plan to implement the five million dollars allocated for affordable housing.
I don't see any other requests to speak. You have a motion, please cast your votes.
Little technical difficulty, maybe? Motion is unanimously approved.
Thank you. We still have a long ways to go, so let's take a ten-minute break now and come back and then move on. Thank you all. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Consent calendar items eight A through eight B C for approval. We've received staff memorandums transmitting additional correspondence regarding items eight E and eight F.
Thank you. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I'm pulling item eight E, and Bruce said he wants to pull eight F. Besides those two, does any other council member wish to pull a consent calendar item? Does any council member wish to recuse themselves from an item? I make a motion to approve consent calendar items eight A through eight B C, with the exception of E and F, along with a noted corrections by the city clerk.
Thank you. You have a motion, please cast your votes.
Motion is unanimously approved.
Thank you. Now, Vice Mayor, would you like to comment on item eight E?
Yes, I'd like to refer eight E back to led and lit for further consideration. Make a motion.
Some motion, please cast your votes. Please cast your votes.
Motion is unanimously approved.
Thank you. And Councilmember Freeman on 8F.
Thank you, Mayor.
Excuse me, Mayor. Remember, we have all of the public statements for item 8F.
Yes.
No. No, I was just going to explain why I ask it to be polled from the agenda. I received quite a few calls and letters from constituents concerned about this ordinance or the amendments to the ordinance. There seems to be some confusion about what we're doing with our amendments and what is already state law. And I thought, we need people to have a chance to express their concerns. A number of them have asked why we couldn't just, you know, wait, wait a month until the state has made, you know, passed these bills. There's three bills on the floor that our amendments were meant to incorporate the language from, and they're Assembly Bill 68, 881, and Senate Bill 13. My understanding is the last day for the governor to sign those is October 13th. So it's only about a month away, and there's been some requests, could we delay this? Just table it for a month, and when, once we know if they passed, and that if our, if the language of our amendments conformed to what they passed, which they're assumed to, but they haven't passed yet, there'd been a request if we could do that. So I thought, I'd first like Phil Burns to sort of explain a little bit what we were trying to do here and what is already passed. My understanding is, a year or two ago, they already passed the law saying ADUs can be put in your neighborhoods anyplace, anywhere. My home, nothing can roll that back. Nothing we're doing tonight can roll back the fact that an ADU is permitted in a gated community, and it doesn't matter what my HOA documents say, people could do an ADU in it right now. So we can't roll back that state law. That was done, this, these three bills are cleaning that up because a lot of, I guess there was a lot of trouble in the implementation and confusion. So with that said, maybe if you can expand before public comments, anything to add to that, Phil, I'd appreciate it.
Mr. Burns.
Sure. Honorable Mayor, councilmembers. ADUs are allowed by state law today in R1 zones. This is something that changed well over a year ago. What is really in front of you is more some relaxations of the rules of parking, which makes them more available to the public. This kind, I think, was the intent. Currently, if someone came in for an ADU, they would have to provide a parking stall somewhere that's off-street. So that's one of the items. The other item has to do with the fees. They're currently treated much more like a duplex, where they would pay a duplex rate traffic impact fees, park development fees, and their sewer connection fees. So that's kind of the big items. The other item that's on the ordinance is being owner occupied. These, again, are items that are on the state bills that should be voted on with the state soon. I'd be more happy to expand further if you'd like.
No, I think that that's adequate. I mean, my personal, the one I have the most trouble with is the removal by the state of the owner occupancy requirement of the primary unit. It's frustrating that all local control's been taken away from us by the state, and we sit here helpless to do anything about it. But, you know, I guess we'll see what happens, but I think we have to do some action on this tonight, but I'd like the public to be able to express their concerns and opinions before we take any action tonight.
Thank you. Councilmember Freeman. Madam Clerk, do we have nine speakers on this item?
Correct.
Okay, good. We'll do two minutes again for each speaker, and would you please call the first one?
John Nolton.
Yeah, my name is John Nolton. I was raised here for a long time, left for a while, came back. And all of this seems to be flowing into the homeless thing that we just talked about for a long time. It becomes apparent what's going on with this particular item we're talking about now. I'm completely against it. I understand now with the state law and everything, it's putting all you people into a position. I wouldn't do, relax any requirements unless the state requires those requirements and you have to live with them. Don't make parking less, don't do away with any parking requirements, fees, anything. And this whole thing of non-owner occupying of the primary residence when you build the ADU is crazy. That's nutty. You know what the investors are going to do when they come into Bakersfield from LA and San Francisco and start buying up vacant, single-family homes and building ADUs into them? Hell, I got a house big enough, I can make a damn fourplex out of it, you know? And this is what's happening in this state, you know? But I understand now, the whole issue with the homeless and everything else, it's quite obvious what they're trying to do and what you guys are having to deal with. But I'm against it in every possible, possible way. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Janice Nolton.
Welcome.
I will leave my.
Please say your name, too, please.
Janice Nolton. The one frustrating thing was that I felt that this came up accidentally, is how we felt about it. There was the planning commission meeting that a lot of us missed and stuff. I don't think there was enough announcement to all of the public. We have a petition going now, which was a little bit too late because of our late notice to get here, to oppose this. We felt that it was being pushed under the table by maybe some preferences of some political parties. And very unfair that we got this late notice, so that we're here staying late to oppose this. It's going to cause a lot of danger in our community that people are not aware of. When I presented it to people who were not aware of the news article that was on Sunday, which was only possible because of one of our neighbors forming the news group, people were appalled that this was going through. They didn't understand it at first. When it was explained to them, they were all in opposition. So there's a larger number of people opposed to this than you're aware of. There's been other assemblies here where you saw a large people, amount of people going outside that you couldn't handle the amount of people. Well, that's what's going to happen here, too, for this bill, because they're all gathering about, because we put out the word. They just haven't been able to come here today. So I think you should slow down on this, think about it. There's a lot of opposition. And nobody's going to want this bill right next to any of your houses. That 404 complex that I'm going to build next to you, you're not going to like it.
Thank you, Ms. Nolton. Next speaker, please.
Gary Simmons.
Welcome, Mr. Simmons.
Welcome. My name's Gary Simmons. And appreciate the time and appreciate the opening of the subject with the council. It's a request that really, really strikes home for us to have some extension and some time. You ladies and gentlemen, in a very, very, very difficult situation, you've got the compression of state politics hovering over you. You are responsible for addressing over 400,000 people in our city limits. People that buy and invest their life savings into a home, and some people, that's the only thing they can invest. That is your life saving. That is your equity. And to buy a home, and they think that they're in a single-family residence, and to find out two weeks later, or 30 or 40 years later, that you're not, and your investment's gone. Because we have politicians in San Francisco, we've got politicians in San Francisco and Sacramento, they can't take care of their own cities. So they impose their political views and their laws on Bakersfield, California. It's a shame. So we have been very, very busy. I've interviewed multiple people, real estate brokers, owners of firms, real estate attorneys, the mass media, and nobody knew about this. So I'm imploring that you, ladies and gentlemen, we take the time to inform 450,000 people and soften the blow of what's coming down from our state level. Soften the blow, make the amendments work well for our citizens in Bakersfield, so it's a better place. Like our branding, our branding effort says, make it a better place, make Bakersfield different. We're not Los Angeles, we're not San Francisco. We got to do our best. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Simmons. Next speaker, please.
David Price Prince. Apologize.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Robert Wharton.
Welcome.
Thank you very much. My name's Bob Wharton. Born and raised here, was gone for 50 years, and came back. Glad to be here, and I appreciate all the work you people do. While I was gone, I was a developer. And I've been a developer in Phoenix, Arizona, Denver, Colorado, Albuquerque, New Mexico. And I will tell you, if this bill passes, I could design you a subdivision, which will have a single-family home designed for 3,500 square feet, and I will go in two bunches to the city and do the first 2,500 square feet and pay the fees. Then I'll come back later and not pay the fees for my auxiliary building that I'm adding on to the home. And you people would be out of fees. I mean, you got to do something to protect the fees that you get. You also have all received a letter from me that I dropped off yesterday. I'm sorry it was so late, but we didn't know about this. But I think that whatever this council passes cannot be one word more restrictive than what the law is that's going to come down from our friends up in Sacramento. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wharton. Next speaker, please.
Teri Maxwell.
Welcome, Mr. Maxwell.
Thank you. My name's Teri Maxwell. Give it a little bit of context, although we're talking about some Senate bills and Assembly bills that are coming up now, this was actually a referral done a year ago by Bob Smith. So I'm surprised that at this point, the council hasn't taken the position that they would like to send a resolution up to the state of California telling them that the city of Bakersfield will govern their own citizens, that they don't need any help from Sacramento. That's what I would expect from a council, is to protect my rights moving into a single-family home, so that no one can just willy-nilly go ahead and start putting these accessory units on board. It's been pointed out that it used to be, it had to be owner occupied, and that's something you guys are dropping. Also, it doesn't say that you may get it approved. It now will be said that you shall get it approved. All you have to do is submit it to it. It's almost like Mr. Burns does not have a choice of saying yes or no to something. He has to say yes, in the language that you're about to adopt. So I would advocate that this be something that you wait to see what Sacramento does. But in the meantime, rather than doing what you're doing tonight, I would advocate that somebody make a motion, that you send a resolution up to the state, to the Sacramento, telling them that you do not agree with any of those bills that are coming up, that it is not fair to the people who are living in this particular community to have to put up with the kind of stuff that they're doing. We all know that they're trying to do this because they have a housing crunch here. I'm not sure what motivated Councilmember Smith to request this in the first place, but again, that was a long time ago that it was requested. It's just now that it's coming to the surface. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Maxwell. Next speaker, please.
Ken Mettler.
Welcome, Mr. Mettler.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, my name's Ken Mettler. I'm a longtime real estate developer. I've built track homes, I've built mother-in-law units, and I own rental homes here in Bakersfield. This proposed ordinance is totally flawed. This will have unintended consequences. Do not vote for this. This is bad. And I know it firsthand exactly how, and one gentleman mentioned he's a developer, how this will be circumvented and abused. You will destroy single-family residential properties valuation system. It's now based ideally on pride of ownership and stability. You will convert it now into short-term slumlord cash flow. And eventually, your homeowners, who do take pride in ownership, will be run off and have to go along to get along, and they will have to go along to the economic model that will become the dominant thing here in Bakersfield. And what you're doing is destroying the will of those people who want to have pride of ownership, keep their properties up. I'm a real estate guy. I could go make millions of dollars doing this, but I morally cannot do that. And you cannot break your covenant that you have made with these homeowners, that they got R1 zoning, and that they can have their dream home for their children and have pride of ownership. We already got a huge problem in this city with code enforcement and abuses already. Mother-in-law units, many times those even get abused, even with an owner occupant, they become rentals. And they add a kitchen unit that they're not supposed to do after it's inspected. That happens all the time, and it's not right, but it does happen. There's unethical people. So don't help the unethical or the short-term thinkers destroy our community. Please, delay this. Do not do anything more than what the state is imposing with their short-term thinking. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mettler. Next speaker, please.
Russell Johnson.
Welcome, Mr. Johnson.
Hi, Russell Johnson, Mayor Go, members of the council. Thank you for having this discussion. I, in lieu of the long hour, the Home Builders Association of Kern County, we've been working on this with your council and with your staff for quite a few months. We just want to thank you for the time and the diligence you've given this. I believe this is our fourth public hearing on this item. So for public hearing, publicly noticed meetings, and we think that the discussion, while the process, there was a seven-point document that was delivered initially to city staff. I think that there was about four revisions that came out of the Planning and Development Committee meeting. The Home Builders Association of Kern County, all, as we went through that process, we were in agreement with what came out of Planning and Development. We'd like to see this move forward now, and any delay would be detrimental. As we began this discussion, a key part of it was fee relief. There's a demand for the product, there's a demand for accessory dwelling units out in the marketplace. And the reality was, is that the way the fee structure worked at the city, in a way, some of the suggestions we brought forward, it just wasn't economical, and people couldn't afford to go through with acquiring what they wanted from the product that was available, but it just wasn't economical to build, given the city's fee structure. The proposal for you addresses that, and it's critical to move forward tonight, because on January 1st, 2020, the new green building code kicks in. It will be faced with some cost increases, which will then add compression to the affordability matter. So we ask that you move forward this evening. We thank you for your time and your diligence. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Madam Clerk, is that the final speaker? Thank you. Returning it to Council Four, Action, Comment and Action. Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. As Mr. Johnson said, we've had four public meetings, and we've been working on this for a year. And as Councilmember Freeman said, it doesn't really change whether or not you can build accessory dwelling units. It changes the fee structure and makes it more equitable. An existing builder now pays a single-family fee plus a fee if he wants to build a mother-in-law quarters. I've gotten a lot of correspondence from people who, you know, have the extended family and the mother-in-law units and extended family, and different reasons to make it work. We also heard earlier, we've got the reasons to make it work. We also heard earlier, we've got the lowest-ever vacancy rate in Bakersfield, and rent has gone up 10% in the last two years. So there's a need for more housing in Bakersfield. So I would move to go forward as is. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Freeman.
Well, I want to be sure, am I the last speaker or any other council members?
I don't see anybody else right now.
This is kind of a tough one, since so much of our discretion's been taken away from us. I think I would like to make a motion that we defer this item past the date of October 13th, when the governor is supposed to sign whatever bills he signs. We know the form they're in now. They would conform to our amendments if they don't change. But, you know, they might, and I'm not sure we couldn't wait 30 days to attempt to do this, and then at that point conform our ordinance to what is passed by the state because we really have no choice. So I just make a motion to defer action on this item until October 13th.
Thank you, Councilmember Freeman. Are there any other requests to speak? We'll be taking Councilmember Freeman's motion first because of the order.
October 23rd, I'm sorry, that's our meeting.
October 23rd. Okay, any other requests to speak? You have a motion on Councilmember Freeman's motion. Please cast your votes. Is anybody having problems? The technology? Just give it a minute.
Motion is approved with Councilmember Rivera, Gonzalez, and Smith voting no.
Thank you. All right. So our next item now is the public hearing. Before I open the public hearing, I'll go over the presentation time policy. Each side will be allowed 15 minutes. Good night to all of you who are leaving. I think we're going to have just a handful left. Thank you all for being here and voicing your opinion. So it's 15 minutes for all speakers, and it's important that you identify yourself, make your statement quickly so others may speak. We'll hear statements from those opposed to staff's recommendation, and then we'll hear from those who would like to speak in favor of staff's recommendation. If there's testimony on both sides, each side will be allowed a five-minute rebuttal. There's a clock on the two screens behind, which indicates 15 minutes. Please step to the microphone, identify yourself. After 14 minutes, a yellow light will come on. At the end of 15 minutes, a red light will come on indicating that your time is up. Quickly end your statement at that point. You may ask questions during your statement, but they won't be answered until the public hearing is closed. If you have written comments that are longer than your verbal statement, please give those to the clerk. She'll provide copies to the council. Please be courteous to others who wish to speak. Unless there's approval by the majority of the council, there's a strict 15-minute time limit, both in favor or in opposition to staff's recommendation. Madam Clerk, would you please read the public hearing item?
Vacation of the 20-foot alley running east and west between Williams Street and Virginia Street, north of Lake Street in Block 169.
Thank you. Mr. Fiddler, would you like to comment?
Honorable Mayor and City Councilmembers, I apologize that the graphic has rotated 90 degrees. So, but however, Bakersfield City School District is looking to improve their Williams Elementary school site. As part of that, they are requesting to vacate the alley that separates a good portion of their properties that are south of the school site. They want to make the connection to those properties. They have worked with the adjacent property owners that have a couple of properties on the south side to maintain an easement. And they've also, we've also reached out to utility companies and the services for that area. We have identified a sewer line within that alleyway, and we are requesting to reserve a public utility easement. And the fire department is requesting access along the alleyway for providing future firefighting assistance. Staff agrees with and approves of this resolution, or this real resolution. That completes my comments.
Thank you. At this time, I'll open the public hearing. How many people would like to speak in opposition to staff's recommendation? Seeing none, is there anybody who would like to speak in opposition in, sorry, I did it wrong, speak in support of staff's recommendation? Seeing none, I will return it. I'm going to close the public hearing, return it to council for comment and action. I see Councilmember Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mayor. Williams Elementary School is part of the Williams neighborhood. I'm really excited about all the various different projects in that area. I had a chance to meet with Bakersfield City School District and learn about their plans for the school expansion and improvements there. And so I'm in support, and I'd like to make the recommendation to adopt the resolution.
Thank you, Councilmember Gonzalez. You have a motion. Please cast your votes.
Motion is unanimously approved.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Council and Mayor's Statements.
Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to make a referral on downtown parking. I spoke with staff about it. If a use is changed in an existing building, that no additional parking would be required, I think right now that's at the discretion of the planning director, and we'd just like to make that more clear to be business-friendly if we can. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Sullivan.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, last week, there was a wonderful service for our officer, excuse me, Kevin Hawk. The police chief did a beautiful, the department did a beautiful job planning this service at River Lakes Church. And then this morning, it was so wonderful, the ceremony for 9/11 out at the substation on Buena Vista. It was flawless, and it was just, it was well-attended. And I was just, I was thrilled to be there and, you know, just very proud of our city and our staff. And we will never, we will always remember, we will never forget. And it was very impressive. And the mayor did a beautiful job with her comments, and it was a wonderful service. Just a wonderful ceremony, respectful, and just beautifully done. So anyway, good meeting tonight. We had a lot of participation. And I appreciate the mutual respect that we have for each other. You know, we don't always agree, but we suck it up, but we have a fondness for one another and certainly a strong respect. So I appreciate that. And we know that each one of us, we're wanting to do what's right, and from our perspective, we are right with our vote and our opinions, and certainly our audience here. I feel that we did a good job, the staff and the council. We had the opportunity to let everybody know that we do care and we are in the process of doing what we can, all that we can, to solve the problem. So we have an excellent staff. We work well together, but good meeting, and thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Sullivan. Does anybody else wish to make any closing comments? It's been 18 years, September 11th, and we will remember. You know, we've mentioned several times today that this will really be the first time that the students in our schools, they weren't even born when this happens, and so we want to make sure that we will remember. And so this evening, I'm going to close the meeting adjourned in memory of the undaunted, in memory of the unheralded, and in memory of the unstoppable. We thank them all for their contributions, and we will remember. We stand adjourned at 9:46.